Good evening. Este mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comments. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak during the first call, we encourage you to stay till the end. To request to participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the raise your hand. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing nine. I'm sorry, star nine. Please raise your hand now if you wish to speak in public comment. If you wait to raise your hand until public comments starts, you may not get to speak during the first call. When called upon, you will be promoted to panelist, which means that you will be, you will appear on screen. So if you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable the camera on your end. The board president will usually call our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please write student at the end of your name. The board president will also determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes. And on an individual basis, the board president has a discretion to provide additional time to those who may need translation or have other needs. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown holding up a sign letting you know you have 15 seconds left. If you are still speaking, please finish your sentence, but try to not go beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionar un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de media hora será dedicado a comentario público. Al final de la junta habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes no pudieron participar durante la primera llamada y desean hacerlo al último, al final de la junta. Si desea participar en comentario público, por favor de levantar la mano ya. Haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccionando el botón levantar la mano. Para participar por teléfono, por favor levanten la mano presionando estrella nueve. Al ser llamado, se le otorgarán uno, dos, o tres minutos, dependiendo la dirección del presidente. Usualmente, el presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. Estudiantes que desean hablar, por favor de indicar que son estudiantes al escribir estudiantes después de su nombre. El presidente determinará el tiempo que otorgará a cada orador y también proveerá tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, usted verá a la vicepresidenta Brown levantar un papel indicando que le faltan 15 segundos y todavía está hablando. Por favor, de terminar su oración, pero trata de no pasarse de su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chares. Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to announce that tonight's meeting will be chaired by our student director, Miles Miller. Director Miller will be in the role of acting president for the meeting tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to you, President Miller. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Alper. That was so much fun. Okay, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to tonight's meeting and welcome to the May 19th meeting at the Berkeley School Board. I will now call the open session of tonight's meeting to order at 7:07 PM. For the record, closed session began at 5:30. And just before we call the roll, I just want to say, due to the amount of speakers that have raised their hands, we can see the participants, the time will be limited to one minute. So please start preparing your comments now. And Ms. Chares, can you please call the roll?
Acting Board President, Miles Miller.
Present.
Director, Anna Vasudev.
Instante.
Director, Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director, Julie Siney.
Here.
Vice President, Khadija Brown.
Present.
And President, Ty Alper.
Present.
Director.
Director. You're free.
Great. And so once again, if you hear from public comment, please raise your hand now. And once we start public comment, if you raise your hand, you have to wait till our second round of public, or the second round public comment period at the end of the meeting. And once again, I'll say, please keep your comments to one minute tonight. We have a lot of speakers who really want to speak, as well as some awesome students coming to speak really soon, actually, as well. So now we will approve the agenda. Are there any requested changes?
Yes, President Miller. I'm going to request that we pull item 12 point. Item 12.5, we're pulling all together because it's not, is that right, Dr. Stevens? Item 12.5 is not ready for approval tonight. So the request that we pull that all together. And then item 12.4, which is the request for approval of the job description for the Director of the Office of Family Engagement and Equity, OFI. Want to pull that and put it on the action calendar so that we can have a brief discussion and presentation framing around that. I know that there's a lot of public interest in that position. And I think it would be helpful to have Dr. Stevens be able to explain what we're actually being asked to approve tonight. So those are the changes I would request to the agenda.
All right, can you repeat the second item, just the number?
12.4. To move to the action calendar. So we'll be voting on the request for approval, but having a short discussion about it at the end of the other action and discussion items.
All right, so any other requested changes? Cool. So is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the suggested changes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Hello?
All right.
President, Miles Miller.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Siney.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Awesome. So tonight, before we have a comment, as we said before, we have a very special 60-minute presentation from some of our students. And Ms. Chares, if you have those names, pull them up here. Get ready.
President Miller, before we get to the public comments, may I please report out from closed session?
Sorry. Yes, Vice President Brown, can you please report from closed session?
Absolutely. And you are doing an amazing job, by the way. Here is the report from closed session. For item 3.1.1, it was moved by Director Siney, seconded by Director Vasudev. Motion passed five to zero. For item 3.2, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.3.1, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.3.2, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.3.3, the board heard an update and provided direction. And for item 3.3.4, board also heard an update and provided direction. Item 3.4.1, it was moved by Director Alper, seconded by Director Vasudev, and the motion passed five to zero. This is the report from closed session.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Vice President Brown. So yes, now, again, I just want to repeat one more time to make it clear. Public comment time will be one minute because a lot of people are raising their hands. So please prepare your comments accordingly to that. And now, I'm very happy to announce the students that are coming to speak to us. There will be, this will be a 60-minute presentation from them, and I'm super excited to hear what they have brought to us. So, yeah.
So I think Mabel can go ahead.
So, yeah.
Hello, my name is Mabel Fantasiou, and I'm in the sixth grade at Martin Luther King Middle School. I'm here tonight along with my peers from Ares to our oceans, a multi-age youth empowerment group in the Berkeley schools that works together to protect the marine environment. We have been recognized by the Sierra Club, the Monterey Bay Aquarium, and the City of Berkeley for our efforts in reducing plastic pollution. Tonight, I would like to begin by thanking the BUSD school board for supporting the sustainability plan and agreeing to move away from disposable food materials and towards a more climate-friendly future. My peers and I are here to tell you today that your decision is going to make a huge difference in the waste that our schools produce, and we can't wait until we are able to put this plan in action. We will need to allocate money to purchase the reusables and to find someone to wash all of the foodware. By doing that, we will create a job for someone, and thus, money that was paying for trash creation is now helping someone's life. Oklahoma State University reports that an average school-aged child produces about 67 pounds of waste from using disposable lunch products in a nine-month school year. This means that each year at my school, King Middle School, we produce about 32 US tons of disposable waste from lunches alone. This is from a single school in Berkeley. Imagine what that means for our whole school district. Recently, our schools in Berkeley have been making an effort to recycle and compost our waste. But sadly, this effort is not enough. At my old elementary school, Oxford Elementary, someone would stand by the trashcans after lunch to make sure that everyone was putting their disposable lunch waste in the right places. Having this awareness was an important step for our school district, but things are changing and require more drastic measures. As our total world population continues to grow, companies are making more and more plastics and other products that are marketed as more sustainable. But it's still all made to be used once and thrown away. This is not only adding to our climate change problem, but also it's creating more waste. Studies are showing that if we continue to produce and discard our plastic waste, there will be more plastic than fish in the ocean by 2050. If we don't do anything to reduce the amount of single-use packaging produced every year, the industrial industry will use up 12 to 13% of our remaining carbon budget. If we were to switch to using reusable cutlery, trays, bowls, and cups in our schools instead of single-use disposables, we could have put a huge dent in the total amount of waste that our schools contribute to the problem each year. Not only would this switch benefit the earth and ocean, but it would also benefit our schools. If we continue on our path right now, spending more and more money on disposables each year, we spend more and more money on fossil fuel-heavy foodware, and we also contribute to our world's problem. Whereas, if we were to switch to non-disposable cutlery, like metal cutlery, our schools would save more money in the long term because we wouldn't have to keep buying the bowls, cutlery, plates, and cups each month and paying again for the materials to be sent to the landfill. And we would stop contributing to the problem. It's a win-win. Right now, there is a huge patch of trash sitting in the Pacific Ocean that is three times the size of France. I came here to ask you today, do you really want to be contributing to this problem? If the answer is no, then I encourage you to step into action and make Berkeley schools disposable-free. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ira Lester. I'm a sixth grader at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. As a middle schooler, I have experienced how our schools operate over the last seven years of my life. I speak to you today on behalf of all the elementary, middle, and high school kids in our district. With every school meal students eat, the problem of plastic pollution gets worse and worse. We must get rid of disposable foodware, both compostable and plastic utensils in our schools. We need to buy dishwashers and hire people so we can shift to reusables. Have you ever wondered what it takes to make a plastic utensil? Well, there are a lot of steps, way too many for something that's only going to be used for five to 15 minutes. First, the oil used to make the plastic has to be dug out of the ground. That burns fossil fuels. Since you have to power the oil rig that digs the hole and the machine that actually extracts the oil. Then, when the oil is transported by ship or pipeline, there's a risk of an oil spill. As recently as February 9, 2021, Chevron's pipeline in Richmond leaked 600 gallons of oil into the bay. This is toxic for all marine life, including the fish we eat. When the fish just fish and we eat it, the toxins go into our body, which means there are chemicals from the oil in us. If the ship does survive the journey and the pipeline is effective, the oil gets transported to a factory and is processed, which once again releases CO2 into the air. When oil is refined, loads and loads of CO2 and other toxins are released into the air. Many communities are being impacted by this. For example, in the Cancer Belt located in Louisiana and surrounding states, communities are being harmed because of all the factors in the area. Those are mostly Black and Brown communities. Many people in those areas are dying of cancer and heart disease. Then, after all that pain, the production of plastic has caused for so many people has to be molded into the shape of the utensil and transported to a store, which requires even more fossil fuels to power the ships and trucks needed for delivery. So now even more tons of pounds of CO2 are being released to the air. After thinking about what happens to make a plastic utensil, is it really worth it to spend all of that money on things that are hurting our health and the environment? All in all, getting rid of plastic, paper, and compostable disposables in our lunchrooms will not only help reduce the amount of CO2 and improve people's health, but also teach kids about good habits to help the environment. School is supposed to teach us to prepare for when we grow up, but also to teach us how to be better people on the planet. Getting rid of plastic utensils, paper food boats, and all the compostables and choosing reusable foodware is an essential step. Children must see reusable foodware in school to make such choices for themselves and the planet. Please, let's begin action on our project with rethink disposable and get reusable schools in my school and all the schools in Berkeley. Bye. The children, like myself, need your support. I will be fight for our future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Vila Domingo. I'm a sixth grader at Longfellow Middle School, and I'm here today to voice my support for the reusable BUSD initiative. I would like to start off by thanking you for committing to reusables and partnering with the Clean Water Fund. But even with this commitment, little action has happened in our schools, and the problems of plastic pollutions are getting worse. I want to ask you, how much plastic do you think is actually recycled? 10%, 50%, maybe even 60%? Well, if you take 3 million tons of plastic, only 8.7% of that is recycled. That's a very small fraction of that 3 million ton.
Did we lose the student?
Yes, I think Sam is first in first cycle. Let's wait for him to see if he comes back in. Sam, you're back now. We can hear you.
Sam, you left off at the 8% data, so if you want to pick up from there.
Sorry. If you take 3 million tons of plastic, only 8.7% of that is actually recycled. That's a very small fraction of that 3 million tons. Single-use plastic is actually shipped off to other countries, poorer countries for this recycling. One of those countries is my home, the Philippines. In this photo, you can see where it looks like where I come from, the Philippines. And you can see plastic everywhere. And it all ends up on that shore because of the water currents leaving it there or its waste from the efforts of plastic recycling. As you can see from the picture, plastic is all over the environment, and it's entering the food chain. We humans consume a credit card's worth of plastic every week. This isn't a good thing, obviously, but we continue to make this plastic plague. Everybody here knows that eating something that's not food is bad for you. And that's the same story for plastic. Actually, it's not just the plastic foodware that's battery. Hundreds of health-threatening chemicals are found in all types of disposable foodware, including paper and fiber. Most of the students are dependent on school meals. So there's no choice but to be chronically exposed to these chemicals that can leach into our food and drinks and have been linked to cancer, as well as affecting my generation's ability to have kids. It's not just the plastic spoons and forks we use, but also the plastic-coated fiber plates we eat from. Children are especially sensitive to this because their bodies are still growing. In school, we're growing our minds, but I believe we should also pay attention to the health of our bodies and not be exposed to harmful chemicals. In a project called Wasteless Wednesdays in 2019 at Oxford Elementary, we offered students reusables for lunch. In that time of only five Wasteless Wednesdays, we avoided 1,161 pieces of single-use plastic. Myself and all the students at Oxford were really happy to be making a difference. And many students even commented the food tasted better because it felt like home when they ate with metal utensils. Imagine if all schools in Berkeley had Wasteless Wednesdays every day, how much plastic we could avoid. Tonight, I ask you to please provide the leadership to support the reusable BUSD initiative and replace paper boats, fiber plates, and bowls, as well as plastic utensils and plastic cups, with reusables, trays, cups, sporks, and bowls. We could even start with not automatically putting plastic utensils in the bag lunches we get now and reusing all the bags. However you choose to move forward, we must act now and get reusables for all school meals. We have to improve the health of our youth and our planet today. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shanzah Sayed, and I'm currently a ninth grader at Berkeley High School. I am also here to voice my support for the Clean Water Fund's reusable BUSD initiative. A while ago, Berkeley Unified School District signed a memorandum of agreement committing to making BUSD foodware reusable. Thank you for making that commitment, but it is important that the school district make good on that promise. My peers today have spoken on the issue of plastic pollution. So I want to focus on what most other people think of as a solution to the problem, compostables. I'm here to tell you that compostables are not a solution. Why? Well, let me start with a question. How many trees do you think are cut down annually? 500 million? 5 billion? Wrong. 15 billion trees are cut down every year to supply for our demand. To put that into perspective, that's 1,712,329 trees cut down every hour. Evidently, compostable foodware isn't as renewable as we thought, and we are buying right into the problem. Compostables are still mass-produced in factories and take an equal, if not greater, amount of resources, such as water and fossil fuels, to produce compared to plastic. Moreover, these products don't even compost very effectively and therefore deteriorate the quality of compost, compelling many recycling centers to simply throw these products in with the landfill, like any plastic product, which brings us right back to square one. And it doesn't stop there. Many compostables, due to their lack of water resistance, are lined with polyfluorical substances, or PFAs. These harmful chemicals are known to cause reproductive harm, damage to the liver and immune system, and increase the risk of cancer. They have been dubbed as the forever chemicals because they never leave your system. Do we really want kids ingesting these toxins, let alone being exposed to them? As a ninth grader, I have been in the Berkeley Unified School District system for 10 years. I have witnessed firsthand the amount of trash a single school can produce in a day, and quite frankly, it's astounding. When we throw a piece of plastic in the trash, we think nothing of it. And by using the same systems in schools, we are raising another generation of ignorance. The ugly truth about plastic is that it doesn't go anywhere. It stays in our oceans, on our streets, and in other countries all over the world. The problem with single-use plastics and compostables isn't solely the plastic or compostable part. It's the concept of using something once and throwing it away a couple of minutes later. With our school district's reusable initiatives, we are not only helping solve the plastic pollution, plastic pollution and the host environmental issues that come with it, but we are raising a whole new generation of responsible individuals who will care for our planet and themselves in the best way possible. We are at a crossroads right now, and the choice is ours. We can be part of the problem or part of the solution. Which one do you want to be part of? Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Alina Kennedy, and I am a fifth grader at Oxford Elementary. I'm here today to voice my support on action on the Clean Water Fund's reusable BUSD initiative. On January 22, 2019, I went to a Berkeley City Council meeting to support Berkeley's disposable-free dining ordinance. On that day, I stated that there is a gyre in the ocean filled with plastic that is bigger than Texas. That gyre, called the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, is about 1.6 million square kilometers, which is an area twice the size of Texas. Today, I shall ask again, do we want a gyre of plastic, about 1.6 million square kilometers outside of the San Francisco Bay Area, right now? Getting disposables out of our school system is so important right now because I don't think anyone wants plastic polluting the bay. We must teach kids at a young age by what we do and warn them about what is actually happening to our environment. Just then, we may be able to save our... Personally, I know change is possible. My small family changed our ways in less than a week. We used to drink out of plastic water bottles each day, every day. Then my teacher, Jacqueline Amagna, started teaching my third-grade class about disposables, and I started taking what I learned at school and making a change at home. Through this experience, I learned that change is essential, and the more we try, the closer we will get to zero waste. As we inch closer to being zero waste, we must talk about the reasons for reusables. There's not just the problem of plastic polluting, from the production to the dumping. But with our immediate alternative of paper, we run into the problem of deforestation. Even though we can consider other plant-based supplies, like bamboo, which grows up to three feet a day, we still have repeated production and shipping costs. So we need to switch from these plastic and paper disposables to reusable metal foodware that will last for generations. I'm only a fifth grader who's about to turn 11, but I dream of our waterways being clear of pollution and not having to worry about things like the constant waste on my school grounds. So please, let's change our ways and begin action on the reusable initiative so we can have a zero-waste future. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys so much for coming. That was awesome. At Berkeley High, as a student myself, I know there's a heavy sense of student advocacy, and I cannot wait for all of you to go up the grades and join that culture. So thank you, Mabel, Ira, Sam, Shanzah, and Alina. You are all awesome examples of what BUSD students, we should all strive to be. So awesome, thank you so much. Now, we are going to move on to public comment. Again, the speaking time will be limited to one minute tonight. There are a lot of people who want to speak. We can see the people who are raising their hands in the attendee section. So for us, the last speaker will be Heidi Estrada, just so you all know. And if you raise your hand any time after this point, you will be able to speak in the second round of public comment at the end of the meeting. All right. Also, Vice President Khadija Brown will be holding up a sign, showing you when you have 15 seconds left and when your time is up. And so please pay attention to her as you're speaking, if you can. And yeah, so our first speaker tonight will be MK.
Oh, I was disconnected. I'm sorry. Do I have to have a video or not?
No, you can turn it off if you want.
Yeah, no, I rather not. So, thank you. I was going to make a comment about something else, but I am very inspired to make a comment about the students who just spoke, Mabel, Alina, and I forget the other name. I love the fact that there are student voices expressing nuances and bringing that to the district. They're asking the district to think differently, comprehensively, and long-term, and have kids at the very center. And I think that's a very strong message, and that's what lacked in the board this year. So I really want to celebrate that. And with that spirit that they brought, think differently, comprehensively, and long-term, meaning that more of the same or less of the same is not going to do. We need to think differently on that point. I would like the board to plan differently, comprehensively, and long-term in terms of psychological health and mental health services throughout K through 12. An embedded component, not an add-on, not more of the same, to address the damage and harm that was done to the kids who had to be at the center this year, and they were not. I can give further details about this. I know the district is getting a lot of money. The kids in middle school and high school should be in school already. I can't see the gallery, so I'm not seeing...
Your time is up for tonight.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see the sign. My fault because I was disconnected. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. And once again, if you don't finish your comments tonight, feel free to email any of us. And if you email boardofed@berkeley.net, we'll all get your comments as well, if you do not finish tonight. All right, so our next speaker is Angela.
Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches. I appreciate the time. And we only have a minute, so I'll just begin. I love the, yes, thank you to the students, always inspiring to hear the youth voice. It's still very important to center them and their families. The idea of ensuring that we build...
Not more of the same, not less of the same.
I think they're still on the...
Yeah, MK, I think you're still unmuted. I'm sorry.
Should I go? So just to continue the idea of being mindful, intentional about how we build our system. about how we build our systems in the school district, um, I want to talk about the importance of, of having that kind of framework as we, uh, think about the TWI, uh, students and the programs, uh, in both Mendez as, as well as across the other schools, uh, for English learners. Very important. Second, um, I want, I got distracted. Okay.
A little more time because you got interrupted.
I paused your time, Anhala. I paused your time. Okay, um, just wanted to share out Latino Unidos, uh, Latinos Unidos at Berkeley, a hundred fifty percent supports an expansion of the OFI office. It's in the how we do it, and again, being mindful that we don't, um, that we do this very, uh, mindfully, and that we make sure that any kind of expansion really does take into account staff voice as well as have an open process for that directorship. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. Sorry, that's my own timer. Um, okay, so our next speaker is Alison Krasno.
Good evening. I'm Alison Krasno, a math teacher at Willard and a BUSD parent. I asked that in our new contract to continue the fifty-fifty split in health insurance costs that we've had over the past two years. Knowing that the rising cost of health insurance will be split between me and the district takes a huge weight off my family's shoulders. We, as employees, should never have to cover the entire rate increase as it means there is truly no limit to how high those deductions could become. I started teaching in Berkeley fifteen years ago. I was in my early thirties and single, and life was pretty financially simple. But if the today me could look back and give advice to the early career me, I have a lot to say. I'd definitely advise my younger self, um, the continually rising costs of medical insurance. I really had no idea. There's five of us on my family's insurance, and every year it's a huge unknown for what the cost will be as we don't find out the rate until after the new school year begins. The cost for me for health insurance is an enormous percentage of my salary. I urge you to keep the insurance costs split fifty-fifty in our new contract. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right. Our next speaker is Mati Tiplam.
Thank you, uh, active, um, first, I would like to congratulate you. Your spot as the acting president today is well-deserved. And, um, it's been fantastic, uh, to, uh, see you in action, assuming you'll be leaving the board soon to, uh, your adventures in life, and, uh, all the best in that. I looked at, uh, moving to the actual topics of tonight, I looked at the superintendent's slide for the, for tonight, and I recognize that you, uh, you're listening to, to our concerns, uh, and you're actually, uh, providing some information about why we should be, uh, confident, uh, about the reopening next year. Unfortunately, um, there's not much confidence that those, uh, slides and statements instill. Um, it would be much more, uh, confident, um, inspiring if you and President Alper and President Meyer could, um, issue that, uh, joint statement that I requested, uh, multiple times, uh, similar to the way that, uh, BSD, um, Piedmont Unified School District has. The fact that you have, are not able to issue that kind of statement is deeply, deeply disturbing and concerning to what, uh, disrepair.
We're trying to get to as well.
Sorry, to me, I'm not seeing signs and Director Miller.
Yeah, sorry, your time's up tonight. I'm sorry, we have to go to the next speaker, but, um...
Yeah, that was a little, um, confusing. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, our next speaker is going to be Paz Mendalas Canales.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Pazman and this is Canales, and I have kids at Berkeley High and Longfellow. I'm here to talk about the hateful letters we have received because of members of Latinos Unidos requesting Spanish-speaking, um, OFI support at, at the last BUSD board meeting. Uh, first of all, we're being accused of segregation. I don't think, uh, how a group choosing to meet of their own accord is segregation. And if we are a group in the, in, is precisely because the system described as unification and equality, and the one-size-fits-all type of solutions has not worked for Latinos, for Latinx students. Hence the achievement gap. We need new solutions, and this is what we're looking into. If there was no achievement gap, we would not be a group. So we exist because there are needs in our community that are not being met, and we have, and have not been met for several years now. Love is helping, um, Latinos Unidos is helping to identify those needs and issues so that Latino, so that Latinx students and families are better served by the district. Uh, finally, where we are grateful for the funding to implement the Acuente program. Families are interested in signing up for the Longfellow and a Longfellow in Berkeley High, and would like some information before the school ends, school year ends. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to speak. Okay, so our next speaker is Maria Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Maria Gonzalez. I'm a Berkeley High student in eleventh grade. I was hoping to share this time with my mother, but since it's only a minute, I'm gonna pass it on to her, and she will be speaking in Spanish.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Beatriz Gonzalez, y soy la mamá de María González, estudiante de Bridge. Y estoy aquí apoyando a Bridge porque ellos, ellos han ayudado mucho a mi María y a mi hija Lorena, que estuvo en Bridge cuando comenzó el programa. Y Bridge ha ayudado mucho a Lorena, uh, con sus tareas, y apoyo, mucho apoyo para la universidad. Y ella se graduó, se graduó de, de San Francisco State. Y yo, con mi poca educación que tengo, no tuve mucha educación, ni sé mucho inglés, entonces se me hace difícil ayudar a ellas. Y por eso estoy apoyando a Bridge porque Bridge ha estado ahí siempre para ayudarlas. Y creo que es un programa muy, muy bueno para nuestros estudiantes, especialmente para estudiantes de papás que no tenemos tanta educación y no sabemos tanto inglés, y no sabemos dónde, uh, encontrar ayuda o para nuestros hijos que sigan a una educación más alta para que lleguen a la universidad. Creo que es todo. Apoyo a Bridge.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Um. All right, so our next speaker is going to be Hector Maldivio. Sorry if I didn't translate your last name correctly.
Is that gonna get translated for folks?
Oh, that's what I was gonna say. Do we want to...
Yeah, she, uh, she came in and she spoke in support of Bridge. Um, she explained that she has another child, another daughter who went through Bridge and succeeded. She graduated from San Francisco State. Um, and she says that Bridge is also a great resource for parents. Uh, it helps parents support their children. In, in summary, that's what she said. Sorry if I missed anything.
No, thank you, Ms. Chavez. Um, okay, so now our next speaker is going to be Hector Maldivio.
Hey, folks, uh, can you hear me? Wonderful. Uh, would it be possible for me to get an extra minute as I want to give my public comment in Spanish as well?
Um, it's, yes, it should be fine.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Uh, my name is Hector Malviedo. Uh, I'm one of the chairs of Latinos Unidos at Berkeley, and I'm speaking in solidarity with families and students that are served in our districts. Uh, you know, we're still in the throes of a global pandemic that has disproportionately impacted our communities of color, especially our Latino and monolingual Spanish speakers and familia. Uh, go down any list or study of COVID impacts, be academic, economic, food security, housing instability, eviction risk, and debt, and you will find our Latino community is always at the top with our Black and African, uh, brothers and sisters. This is indicative that our communities, especially those that are immigrant and non-native English speakers, are consistently an afterthought, and the consequences are tremendous. I want to deeply thank you, all of you, especially thank the dedicated OFI staff who have been doing everything they can to engage families with the resources they need to survive this pandemic and going above and beyond to close our education gaps, uh, for our Latinx students. We invite you to join Latinos Unidos members in strong support, funding at least one or more OFI staff positions that are Spanish-speaking. Uh, and we also really want an open and public process for this new director position for the OFI, uh, office. Uh, I also want to quickly address that for us Latino community members, for more support, especially as it pertains to language justice and accessibility, we're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for an equitable and community-informed response to our needs because these asks are not just reasonable. They are just... I don't know how much time I have left. Fifteen seconds out of two minutes?
Um, we could do an extra couple, three seconds if you need.
Okay, I'll go, I'll finish my English public comment there, and I'll go quickly to my Spanish one. Mi nombre es Hector Malviedo, y soy uno de los líderes de Latinos Unidos de Berkeley, y hablo, eh, con las familias y los estudiantes de las, la ciudad de Berkeley. Todavía estamos al borde de una pandemia global que nos ha impactado a nosotros desproporcionadamente, y estamos luchando para más, este, recursos para nuestras familias. Estamos pidiéndole al distrito que, por favor, nos dé una posición o más posiciones de la oficina de, de recursos de familias y equitatividad, este, para que nos puedan apoyar más durante...
I'm sorry, but your time is up now, so...
No worries. Thanks again.
All right, so, no, it's fine. All right, so, yeah, just to clarify, for translation, we gave extra time, but everyone else is going to have a strict one minute. Okay, so our next speaker is Andrew Henderson.
Yes, um, oh. Sorry. Um, buenas tardes. Good evening, Superintendent Stevenson, board members. Um, my name is Andy Henderson, and I'm the teacher at Sylvia Mendez Elementary. Um, and also a parent and a BUSD student. And I'm here to advocate for the annual B-Clad stipend that, um, the Berkeley Federation of Teachers has presented. And a bilingual stipend is an important way for us to attract and retain bilingual teachers. Teachers with bilingual credentials serve our students in so many ways. Um, the primary way it's served is, of course, through bilingual teaching, but they also play critical roles in curriculum selection, development, modifications. Bilingual teachers are able to connect with families with the language and cultural understanding that they bring. And a stipend is a financial incentive for teachers to join our district and stay in our district. It is also recognition of their unique and valued skill set, and when teachers feel valued, they're more likely to stay in their positions. So recognizing and compensating bilingual skills, um, okay, thank you, um, will be a benefit to the whole community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. All right, so our next speaker is going to be Gladys Stout. Has Gladys, um, been promoted to panelist yet? All right, there you go.
Okay, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Gladys Ocampo Stavn. I'm a Sylvia Mendez parent and member of Latinos Unidos of Berkeley. I'd like to say thank you to Directors Babette, Sinai, and Basudeo for joining us in our OUB meetings and welcome all you all to join us. Over the years in the district, there have been many times when marginalized groups have not been taken into consideration in planning for programs, events, and funding. During the pandemic, we saw an even larger disconnect between Latinx families and the district. Many Latinx families struggle to understand everything related to school reopening and where to access services for their children at a district level. At our site, we're lucky enough to have Spanish-speaking OFI staff person, but this is not the case at other sites. Many of the Latinx families brought this issue to Director Basudeo, who quickly started asking questions, raising our concerns in public forum, and uplifting our requests for data to understand how the district serves our families. She has done the same with other longstanding issues we have brought up, like academic performance of Latinx and Latin, and ELL Latinx students in math. The fact that these concerns are being brought up at meetings is something that has invigorated many Latinx parents and have been more involved and active, including myself. We are coming together at Latinos Unidos of Berkeley, finding strength and power in the unity of our common experience and common struggle. We hope you see the power and the influence of these, definitely, and thank you.
All right, so thank you for coming to speak. And our next speaker is Danard Dune Martin.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Danard Don Martin, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner in third grade at Sylvia Mendez. Um, and also a very proud person, family, a proud parent who is part of the Sylvia Mendez community. As you know, we have an amazing, dedicated staff at Sylvia Mendez, and our staff has worked so hard and gone above and beyond for the students by building curriculum in both Spanish and English, including translating curriculum into Spanish so our kids could continue to learn through distance learning. They do this work because they want our students to thrive in both languages, and it's time for the district to support them, their efforts, and the commitment the district made when creating Sylvia Mendez as a TWI school. We need to support this. I, um, how am I doing on time? Okay, or am I up? Fifteen. Okay, thank you. You've heard from many, um, members of the Sylvia Mendez community, Longfellow, including parents and teachers. And we would like you to keep in mind, um, as you make budget decisions, especially when you're thinking about long-term funding strategies. Um, thank you so much for your time, and we appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Don Martin. All right, so our next speaker is going to be Lydia Craig Hill.
Hi, I'm Lydia Craig Hill. I'm a, a special education teacher at Berkeley High School. Uh, and I want to urge this board in your negotiations with BFT not to increase the amount of assessments and paperwork that special education teachers are required to do as part of our job. This is an issue of equity, and it's an issue of teacher retention. Every additional assessment I have to write takes away time from providing direct services to my students. This hurts students and families who we serve, and it hurts our educators who are already burnt out and overworked. We already have vacant special education teaching positions at the start of every school year, and increasing our workload further is only going to make this problem worse. I have a student on my caseload this year who did not have a case manager all last year. He had three substitutes over the course of last year instead of a case manager. Uh, and this year, his parent has a lawyer. This is an issue that's going to continue spiraling out of control if retention of special education teachers is not made a top priority in this district. And that means first and foremost, not increasing our workload so we can focus on what matters most in this job, which is serving students. And if that means the district needs to hire a focus team to take on extra assessments and reports, then that's what needs to happen and not passing the burden on to our service providers and students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Craig Hill. All right, so our next speaker is going to be Patricia Guzman, and I think then we are going to go back to Bobby Lopez because they, um, she was on the dais and then somehow was brought off, so...
Hello, my name is Patricia Guzman. I would like to speak today in behalf of Bridge Program. My daughter Serena Thomas is a sophomore at Berkeley, uh, High School. The importance of this program is me, myself, experience education in Texas as a Latino student. I was actually told when it came time for my college education to not to worry about it, that it wasn't for me. So for me, this program is so important in supporting our Black and Brown students, our Latino community, and getting more of them through high school. Also, building a program that helps, as, as a parent, understand how education works nowadays, because everything changes. So I'd like to thank, uh, so much Ms. Loxford and the Bridge Program for continuing to support our students and also inspiring me to look into going back to school. And, yeah, that'll be, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Guzman. So, yeah, now we're going to have, um, Bobby Lopez on. Sorry, I think somehow we skipped over you before.
No worries. Thank you so much for your time. Good evening, Acting President Miller, members of the board. Bobby Lopez here on behalf of the East Bay Latino Democratic Club, here to support the ask of Latinos Unidos. I also happen to be a former parent outreach worker from SFUSD and I think we all agree that parent involvement is crucial to making sure that, you know, parents that are involved have students with higher grades, better attendance, better test scores. And what we're asking is right now you have a group of parents seeking your support to close the achievement gap for Latino students, which has only been exacerbated by the pandemic. As you're familiar with, Latinos in California had three times the rate of COVID. Twenty-six percent were jobless at one point and 20% were unable to pay their rent. Studies after studies shows that this pandemic was brutal to Black and Brown folks. And I actually have a Berkeley-specific poll that shows that Berkeley was no different to the Black and Brown community. I have fifteen seconds, I'll make account, given that Gavin Newsom announces large investment into education at May revises the perfect opportunity for Berkeley Unified to really fund BIPOC students and address their achievement gap, please listen to the Latino families and LUB before you and my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lopez. Alright, so our next speaker is...
Wait, did we lose President Miller?
We lost him.
Oh no. That's not good. Wait, he's back.
Alright, I'm back. I think on accident I was demoted to an attendee, except...
That was my bad, sorry.
Kind of ironic, as Acting President, that happens to me, but alright, thank you. Okay, so, um, yes, our next speaker will be, um... Where are you? Yes, Mark Joseph Ramia.
Mark Ramia here, Instructional Assistant, VHS. I recently joined a Zoom meeting with Alyssa Lynette Robinson and a new Director of Human Resources, Glentilly Gascoirios, concerning a document I sent, certified return receipt to BUSD Public Information Officer, Trish McDermott, Superintendent Brent Stephens, and Principal Juan Regosa, asking if there is an on-campus in-person position for which I wouldn't need to take a COVID-19 test twice a month. During the meeting, Glentilly contradicted herself, first apologizing for her prior claim that the Berkeley Unified School District could require employees to vaccinate. Then, within a few moments later thereafter, she stated that the Berkeley Unified School District could require employees to vaccinate. Does Glentilly speak on behalf of the Berkeley Unified School District that the district can require employees to vaccinate? Is there a law or policy that gives BUSD the right to force demand or require employees to vaccinate? Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, and so Ms. Shires, can you please bring up our next speaker? David Schroeder, are you there?
Oh, thank you. A school board member's staff, thanks President Miller. I'm overjoyed to be serving students as a math teacher at Berkeley Independent Study. I could not do my job if I were unable to collaborate with superb special educators and this year, we have one beloved special education case manager on site. But now she's moving on, leaving very big shoes to fill. The case manager is the single person at my site supporting students' special needs by checking in with students, their families, and educators like me from early morning till late at night. Such exceptional demands on a teacher require exceptional compensation to recruit and retain them. This case manager position must be filled next year. To that end, BFT's proposed stipends for current employees, reimbursement for newly hired case managers on intern credentials, and support for new case managers are all vital next steps. So my students are counting on the district to recruit and retain employees via good compensation. Thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schroeder. Alright, Ms. Shires, can you please bring up the next speaker?
Irma Parker, you're up.
Good evening. My name is Irma Parker. I've been a staff person at Berkeley High School for 21 years. I am the founder and coordinator of the Berkeley High School Parent Resource Center. Dear members of the school board, Superintendent Stevens, and members of the community, we would like to express our gratitude for recent attention and appreciation of the work of family engagement and equity specialists on behalf of underserved students and families in the Berkeley Unified School District. We feel the support of the families, staff, and community. We have the privilege and honor of serving. We recently had the opportunity to read comments submitted by the Parent Advisory Committee about our work. We agree with the statement that OPI operates under a service-delivery model and not a family-engagement model. We also agree with the call from board members for measurable outcomes and data to show the effectiveness of our work. We as staff doing the work with school...
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, but your time is up for tonight.
That was not one minute, but...
I'm sorry, if you, if you want to email us your comments afterwards, we will all read them, so.
I beg your pardon, I didn't understand you.
I'm sorry, um, again, if anyone else, everyone, if anyone runs out of time tonight, please, you can always email us your comments at boardofeducation@berkeley.net. Alright, so for our next speaker, Liz, can you bring up our next speaker, please?
You did good.
That was not a complaint.
Leah Cass, you're up next.
Hi.
Yeah?
Do you mind if I make a comment before Leah Cass? That everyone will have the same one minute based off of the timer that I'm setting. Would it be more helpful to show the timer instead of this?
Um... I... I mean, I think the signs work probably just as fine.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, President Miller. You're doing a fabulous job. If I can, I would like to cede my time to Karis Taylor tonight.
Alright. Okay, so I guess Karis Taylor then.
I'm sorry, what's the last name?
Taylor.
Just to make clear, President Miller, it's still just one minute.
Okay.
Karen?
There I am. Hi. My name is Karis Taylor. I'm a special ed teacher at Berkeley High School. And 26 members of the Berkeley education staff are united in solidarity with our colleagues at BCC Berkeley, so of classified employees who have rightfully requested hazard pay. BCC members are the backbone of Berkeley High, representing an incredibly wide range of roles within the district, including custodians, executive assistants, safety officers, media technology techs, faculty, facility staff, instructional assistants, and many, many more. Throughout the pandemic, many have been asked as part of their work to risk their own health and the health of their households. As students return to school for hybrid learning, the risk of many of these same employees are increasing exponentially without commensurate acknowledgement or compensation. Special education community at Berkeley High School is made up of many students, counselors, teachers, administrators, and many BCC members who are deeply valued. We demand hazard pay for our BCC colleagues, which have already guaranteed for staff and other districts of California across the country. Okay, that was up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Alright, Ms. Shires, can you bring up our next speaker?
Miguel Girando. Miguel?
Miguel, are you there? You're muted right now. Alright, um, oh, there you go.
Can you hear me? Yes, thank you. Alright, I appreciate it. I just want to give my support to the Bridge Program. I just want to give a little bit of my testimonial of how that impacted my family. I have two daughters, I have twins. One like to be on the Bridge Program, one be...
Miguel, are you there? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Um, how about we try and go to our next speaker and then we'll see if he connects back?
Elizabeth Gonzalez? Were hit by the pandemic, my daughter that is in the Bridge Program, that my daughter that doesn't have...
Okay, so... Miguel, you were cutting out for a bit. How much time did you have left?
Yes, thirty-seven seconds left. It's been paused at thirty-seven seconds left.
Alright, Miguel, you were cutting out a little bit with your audio, are you going to finish your comment?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I was talking about the impact of Bridge on my family. With two of my daughters, one didn't want to be in the Bridge Program, one did. And the big difference between both of them, with the one that is in the program. And that's why I want to support Bridge because it's giving me, as a parent, and my daughter to be able to go and go beyond what she's capable of doing now. And she's doing better and I really appreciate all the support that that brings to my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miguel. Sorry. Alright, so now our next speaker is Elizabeth Gonzalez.
Buenas noches, board members. My name is Elizabeth Gonzalez and I have been a BUSD preschool teacher for 20 years and I am here tonight in representation of 15 of my colleagues, preschool teachers. We want to express our support for BFT proposal that additional steps be added to our salary schedule and we will receive an overall pay increase. As a veteran teacher here in Berkeley, I maxed out on the salary schedule 12 years ago. Eight steps is simply not enough. Within BUSD, we are the lowest-paid teachers and almost all salaries on the schedule fall under the very low-income category of Alameda County average-medium income. In fact, BUSD substitute teachers are paid more than some of our ECE teachers. Although BUSD has a goal of classified-to-certified pipeline, many of our IAs are paid more in their current role than they will be as teachers and therefore they're not have an interest in pursuing a career in ECE teachers. In addition to the rewarding aspects of our work, teaching...
Your time is up for tonight.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, so our next speaker is, I'm sorry, Ms. Shires, can you bring up our next speaker, please?
Emily, you're up next.
You're fast. You went fast. Did you have that one minute? That didn't seem like when they give other people way longer.
Hello, this is Emily. Did you call my name?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. My comment is really just a question. I received an email from my child's school asking us to fill out a survey called the Distance Learning Model Survey for the 2021-22 school year, giving us a couple of potential options if we were to want to continue with distance learning next year. But there wasn't very much any context and so I'm hoping that in your presentation this evening, you will mention, maybe give us a little bit more information about what that might look like. There was something about independent study like BIS and there was something about a commercial online education program, but... Yeah, I just would like more information. Thank you.
Thank you so much for speaking and yes, there will be a presentation tonight regarding some of that information as well, just so everyone in the public can know. Alright, so our next speaker, Rachel Doherty.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
I'm not sure if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Alright, so I'm a parent of a Mendez school of a second grader and I guess the Green Team lead parent there and I'm also on Berkeley City's Zero Waste Commission. And I am speaking tonight in support of the students who spoke earlier and the work they've been doing and that we've been doing, along with community partners. In 2013, the school board passed a resolution committing to reduce waste by 90% by 2020. We haven't met that commitment, not even close. We've been working for two years now very hard with our community partners and it looks like next year we may use spoons in the morning at two schools. And frankly, our students learn from what we do even more than what we say and we've made a lot of commitments over the years that we haven't fulfilled and that we have an obligation to fulfill. It's disrespectful of our students, the amount of waste that we generate and it's disrespectful of the countries to which that waste is exported. So I do urge you to take this seriously and help us do what we need to do to move that process along. Thanks.
Thank you for coming to speak. Alright, so Ms. Shires, our next speaker.
Rosa Moreno, you're up next.
Hi. Oops. Hi, good evening. Buenas tardes, good evening Superintendent Stevens and board members. My name is Rosa Moreno and I have taught for 17 years and I teach third grade for the past eight years at Rosa Parks Elementary. I am proud parent of three fully bilingual and bilingual children. I also obtained a bilingual authorization teacher certificate, also known as a B-Clad. I'm here tonight advocating for the annual stipend that the Berkeley Federation of Teachers has presented to the board. We are asking for a stipend for teachers, speech-language pathologists, and psychologists with bilingual authorization. As a teacher with bilingual authorization, I am constantly using professional's translation to help families engage in their children's learning process. This whole year, I had to translate some report cards for the district new report card system. Translating has been more important than ever because I help notify families of school with opening status, transitions to online versus in-person. We can also attract and obtain teachers with bilingual authorization. Many surrounding districts like Hayward, Opus, and Landry and West Country-Costado offer a B-class stipend and Berkeley needs to...
But your time is up for tonight, sorry.
Thank you.
Alright, so our next speaker, Ms. Shires.
Yvette Falarka, you're up next.
Ms. Falarka, you're muted.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yvette Falarka, I teach at King Middle School and I'm speaking on behalf of the YanBAM Caucus. Berkeley teachers and support staff are incredibly dedicated to the education of our students. Our contract is expiring in a few weeks. Increasing salaries for early childhood education teachers, bilingual stipends, and increased special education support must be priorities in contract negotiations. It's a question of equity. We've put our hearts and souls into providing the best education for our students, especially this past year. These priorities are essential for our student success. On a separate note, outbreaks at Berkeley High and at our elementary schools show why mandatory COVID-19 testing and vaccinations for students must be prerequisites for reopening schools. Berkeley is an international community and we do not live in a bubble. Five million people have been diagnosed with COVID in the past 14 days alone. In just India, one nation, there are countless more. Student vaccinations and testing should be mandatory. Otherwise, we're playing Russian roulette with our students' lives.
Your time is up for tonight.
As possible. Thank you. As possible. Thank you.
All right, so Ms. Shire is our next speaker.
You're up next. Morrison.
Hi Alexandria, you're muted.
Hey, sorry about that. Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great. Um, I am a parent of a Berkeley High School student and a soon to be incoming freshman. Um, I'm calling to speak on behalf of the Bridge Program and hoping that uh, funding is still going towards this awesome program. Um, my son is, he has gotten so much better as a student and gaining confidence with so much hope from Ms. Luxford and Ms. Erby. And uh, Mr. Alper is the reason why my son wants to be a lawyer and he wants to go to Stanford and knowing that every time he gets the help that he needs from, you know, the Bridge Program, that it's, it's possible. And um, just knowing that my daughter is looking up to her brother, it, it does help to know that, you know, the steps that are taken.
I'm sorry.
And that's great, but he should go to Berkeley.
Should go to Berkeley. Okay, I'll let him know. Thank you, Mr. Alper.
You know, tell him to, tell him to give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so our next speaker is Rudy Supaloni.
Hello, this is Val Chipalone and Director Miller, I would like to commend you for your honest and earnest effort to represent student needs and voices during this year of leadership crisis. I would also like to thank you for bravely sharing your story with our community via Berkeley side. Thank you, Director Miller, and all best wishes to you in your future endeavors. Why school board do we not have a plan for opening our middle and high school, middle schools and high school now? The slides you um, put up on your site this afternoon are not a plan for the fall. In your what-if questions, you mentioned students in cohorts just in case. How will this affect student schedules at Berkeley High? Will course selection be compromised by this cohorting assumption? Cohorts are not necessary. We need to see your plan for the fall. And last, I would like to know by a show of hands, who among you has read the Berkeley side article that Miles so bravely contributed to? Could you raise your hand if you have read that article?
Time's up for tonight, I apologize. All right, thank you so much for coming to speak. All right, so our next speaker is Justin Lehrer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Great, um, sorry. So I'm a parent of a BAM fourth and second grader. Uh, shout out to Ms. Leepman, Ms. Kari and all the amazing staff at BAM. Uh, I also work for Stop Waste, a public agency working to reduce waste in Alameda County. My area of expertise is packaging and I have assisted many organizations to reduce their packaging waste over the past fifteen years or so. One of our current priorities is to help build up more infrastructure for reusable foodware in Alameda County. And before we can ask our community members to stop using disposables, we need to make sure that reusables are available and accessible at our restaurants, our cafes, many dining facilities throughout the county, including of course our schools. So I just wanted to say we're very supportive of this effort in the district. We commend the students presenting this evening and working on this, as well as the district for the commitment and the M O U to ditch disposables and incorporate reusable foodware. Stop Waste recently, oh, I'm up, we recently awarded two grants in support of the work and we're looking forward to the results. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak. All right, so this is our last speaker now, Heidi Estrada. Heidi, you're muted.
Sorry. Oh, good evening. My name is Heidi Estrada, Stephanie Estrada's mother. She's a senior at Berkeley High School and is going to graduate this year. She will be attending UC Marcel thanks to the help from the Bridge Program. Bridge helped her every step of the way and even paid for the application. As a mother who didn't go to school in the United States, Bridge has informed my family and I about the whole process applying to college and navigating her through the high school journey. I'm glad there are programs like this and I can happily say that my ninth grade son will be a part of the program these incoming academic years. And I want to say thank you for the support and to keep supporting the program at high school. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to speak. All right, so thank you for everyone who came to speak tonight. That concludes this public comm period. Um, if you didn't get a chance to speak, please remember there is an extended public comment at the end of the meeting.
President Miller, I'm sorry to interrupt. There was, there was one student who, Dwayne Clay, who I think was, had his hand up and he dropped off. Do you think we could just have let him speak?
Um, yes, but very quickly.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, um, I was going house chores, but um, yes, um, my name is Dwayne Clay. I'm a junior at Berkeley High and I'm here on behalf of the Bridge Program and I just want to say how, how much they have helped me, how much they have supported me. Um, I'm an actor and a dancer, so you know, Bridge helps me like with all of my time, you know. Usually I can't go home and do my homework, so you know, they give me time to be in an environment. If that makes a difference, because you know, when we have people that actually wants to volunteer, it helps and you know, it lets us know that somebody is there for us. And I feel like that's something that we just need, you know, they must definitely bring support. Ms. Luxford speaks for us when nobody doesn't, you know, I have a lot of friends that doesn't like to just confront teachers. So you know, when we're not on it, they're on it for us and I know that there's a lot of people that's like that and I feel like, you know, if you guys continue to keep funding, um, Bridge, you know, we can continue to have that support as well as my sister. So um, yeah, I just want you guys to know, to know, like, you know, it helps and it supports us in, in tremendous ways and I just want you guys to know to just try to keep funding.
Time is up for tonight, but thank you so much for coming out to speak.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so now that concludes our public comm period and if you want to speak still in the meeting, there is extended public comment at the very end of the meeting. So now we move on to our comments from unions. Each union has five minutes and I believe tonight we're starting with a video from V F T. So Liz, if you could pull that up.
I will be sharing my screen.
Liz, I think you need to share your sound.
Sorry about that.
Board members and Dr. Stevens. I'm Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Educators have signed on tonight to describe the importance of the proposals that we have put on the table. This year has been unlike any other. Our family, students and educators have stepped up with the goal of student success in mind. As this year begins to wrap up, our educators are thinking about what happens next. We believe a middle school advisory supported by a central team of planners will help our students transition back to full days in the classroom and address the many social and emotional needs our students have. We know that the needs of our students are massive as we move forward to the next year. Our contract proposals are centered around meeting these needs. We know that without our gen ed teachers and our specialists like case managers, counselors, bilingual teachers, speech language therapists, visual and performing arts and preschool teachers, the work to lift up our students and help them excel cannot happen. Many of our proposals involve stipends that recognize the work that our teachers do that goes above and beyond work hours and that we know will be necessary in the future. If we are not fully staffed, our students will suffer. Even before the pandemic, we had difficulty filling our positions that serve our most vulnerable students. Now it is even harder as many teachers have left the profession and new teachers enrolled in credentialing programs is at an all-time club. We cannot serve our bilingual students and families without bilingual teachers. We cannot serve our students with I E Ps without case managers. Our after-school program with its split shift is understaffed. Our proposals address these needs and will allow our district to recruit and retain a highly trained teaching staff. There are also funds available through the Berkeley Educator Recruitment and Retention Act that are explicitly meant to be used for this purpose. Measure E one, Barra, has helped Berkeley educators catch up to average pay in our area. Unfortunately, even with this investment, the U S D teachers still do not make average wages when compared with neighboring districts. Without a raise, we will fall further behind with little avenues to catch up in the future. The district does not contribute at all to healthcare increases. Our teachers will be taking a pay cut next year for the same level of benefits. The long-term impact is one that every one of our sites will feel as teachers leave for other districts and daily subs are assigned to classrooms. With an unprecedented amount of state funding this year, Berkeley has an opportunity to invest in its future by making sure our teachers and classified staff have competitive salaries and our specialists are compensated so the necessary work can be done to ensure all of our students have access to the best education possible. We urge the board to bring a quick resolution to negotiation so we can shift our energy on the return to full in-person learning in August. Thank you.
All right, and then I think the next union we have coming is B C C E and yep, Veronica Huntsberry is raising her hand right now. So if you can motor a panelist. And just as a reminder, unions and um, yeah, unions get five minutes just so the public knows as well. Veronica, you there? You're currently on mute.
Good evening, school board and Dr. Stevens. I'm Veronica Huntsberry, the Vice President of Office Technical and Business Services for B C C E. I'm coming forward tonight to say thank you to all of our five hundred plus classified employees. They are the true essential workers. Classified employees are the bedrock of the school district. Classified workers have put their lives on the line as the frontline workers during a COVID nineteen pandemic without vaccinations readily available and the country was still trying to figure it out. I want to thank our classified employee family members who are worried or in fear about their loved ones coming home from a day's work, whether or not if they have been exposed to COVID nineteen. Thank you to the year-round employees, the nutritional service workers that provided fresh and nutritious meals to our students on a daily basis. To the, to the custodial staff putting their lives on the line by making sure that all of us had a safe and clean place to work and learn. To the, to the maintenance department for ensuring B U S D is up to standards. To all of our three units within B C C E, instructional assistant parent professionals, office technical and business services and operations support services. Thank you for serving students, staff, administrators, teachers and the whole Berkeley community. It is impossible for the district to move without all of you. We want you to know that we are grateful and appreciative of your transparency, support and commitment during these chaotic times. Again, we are thankful for your service. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so how about we, for, sorry, for our next set of comments, we have committee comments and we have pretty sure three different committee comments tonight. So how about we start with PAC Committee? So I think that means Sandra Loving, Tasi Meyer, and I'm pretty sure Director Abbott is also speaking a little bit.
Okay, can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. All right. Hello, my name is Sandra Loving and I'm here to convey the PAC's comments on the critical need for more emotional and behavioral support for our prioritized students. COVID nineteen resulted in isolating students from their peers and in-person interaction, which has increased the national mental health prices among primary and secondary students. At board meetings earlier this year, many parents expressed their concerns about their children's emotional health, but their voices were not necessarily representative of the families of our prioritized students. In my job, I work with our prioritized students and their families and I'm here to tell you that many of these students have, have been through, goes far beyond the trauma of isolation. Many caregivers were essential workers who had to go to work or lose their jobs. Some family members got sick and some died. Caregivers lost their jobs, which created both food and housing insecurity. Families lost their homes, some became homeless for the first time. These profound traumas have deregulated these students and made learning more challenging for them. And let's be very clear and honest, pre-COVID, they were already at a disadvantage in their learning and their emotional support. Is Tasi here?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Can we also promote Tasi to the panels as well?
I'm sorry and I hope this isn't cut into my time.
Here's Tasi, okay.
Hello, okay. Estoy aquí para transmitir los comentarios del PAC sobre la necesidad crítica de masa por emocional para nuestros estudiantes con menos recursos. Esta pandemia ha incrementado la necesidad de servicios de salud mental entre nuestros estudiantes. En las primeras juntas de este año, muchos padres expresaron sus preocupaciones al respecto, pero sus voces no fueron necesariamente escuchadas, sobre todo para los más necesitados. En mi trabajo le damos prioridad a estudiantes con más necesidad. Estos estudiantes han pasado por muchos traumas más grandes que la insalación, creando mucha inestabilidad. Y seamos honestos, antes de la pandemia, estos estudiantes ya tenían desventajas académicas.
Please do not say that we can't do anything now because the money may run out in the future. Now is not the time to limit what we do because you're concerned about sustainability. Now is the time to support our prioritized kids with additional mental health resources to help them process their trauma so that they will benefit from the academic support systems we provide for them.
Por favor, no digan que no podemos hacer nada solo porque los fondos se pudieran agotar en el futuro. Ahora es el momento de apoyar a nuestros niños proporcionándoles recursos adicionales para su salud mental y así ayudarlos a procesar su trauma.
Kids thrive on stability and consistency and the reality is that pre-COVID, we were not doing enough for these kids. To get a clearer picture of what's in place, I spent the past two weeks contacting resources at our schools. What jumped out at me and what people shared is that our district lacks adequate mental health services and what it does have is fragmented. What our K five schools can provide with thirteen thousand from LCAP and additional funding from the city is not enough to impact all these children in need. No school has mental health counselors onsite every day for its students. The mental health counselors we have don't have the opportunity to regularly interact with other staff members. When it comes to mental health, everyone is acting independently, doing their own thing and winging it. The less collaboration a system has, the more inequitable it becomes. Our kids need the stability and consistency that happens when all resources work collaboratively to provide wraparound services that addresses students' mental health needs. Before now, there has never been enough money to provide what is needed. We need to have a full-time counselor at each of our K eight schools. Again, now is not the time to focus on sustainability. Now is the time to act strategically. Minimally, we need Spanish-speaking mental health counselors at Sylvie Mendez and Longfellow and at the high school. And we need mental health counselors dedicated to our Bridge and RISE programs.
Los niños salen adelante si hay estabilidad y consistencia y la realidad es que antes del COVID no hacíamos suficiente. Durante dos semanas me ha dado a la tarea de investigar en nuestras escuelas para tener datos exactos y lo que me atrae la atención es la falta de recursos para salud mental. Las escuelas primarias pueden tener. Las escuelas primarias pueden tener tres tres milles de LCAP y fondos adicionales de la ciudad. Esto no es suficiente para hacer un impacto real. Me gustaría que trabajemos en colaboración para poder mejor mejorar este aspecto. Mínimo necesitamos un consejero de tiempo completo y bilingüe en Sylvia Mendez and Longfellow and La Preparatoria of Berkeley High, y necesitamos consejeros de salud mental dedicados a nuestros programas Bridge y Rise.
Not that long ago, during the years of our first LCAP three year plan, our district attempted to use LCAP funds to establish consistent model for mental health. The difference between now and then is that we're in a crisis and we're in a unique situation. We have funding to provide. You guys, we got kind of cut off. I've almost done literally.
Just finish up with that, like.
Okay, we have the funding to provide the sufficient mental health resources. There's still a very important role for LCAP and PAC, which is to ensure the district's overall accountability to our students, our families, and our next three year LCAP plan, which absolutely must include expanded mental health services for our students at all levels.
No hace mucho en nuestro primer plan LCAP de tres años, el distrito intentó gastar sus fondos para establecer un modelo consistente para la salud mental. La diferencia entre ahora y entonces es que ahora estamos en una crisis. Tenemos los fondos para proporcionar suficientes recursos de salud mental. Todavía hay un papel muy importante para LCAP y PAC que es garantizar la responsabilidad general de nuestro distrito hacia nuestros estudiantes, nuestras familias, y nuestro próximo plan LCAP de tres años que debe incluir absolutamente servicios servicios de salud mental extendidos para nuestros estudiantes en todos los niveles.
Thanks, you guys.
All right, thank you guys so much.
Gracias.
All right, so our next speakers are from the PNO committee, and I'm pretty sure that's Terry Pastica. Just as a reminder, you have five minutes. So. I think Terry got dropped from the meeting somehow, so.
Why don't you go to Sherry Washburn next?
And I will go to Sherry Washburn instead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening to the board and district staff. My name is Sherry Washburn and I'm speaking to you tonight as a BUSD School Board appointed member of the North Region SALPA's Community Advisory Committee. The School Board has appointed me to serve on our SALPA's Community Advisory Committee, which we refer to as the CAC, because that's a lot of words, to facilitate to facilitate community involvement in the way our district and special education local plan area, or SALPA, delivers special education services. The CAC is here to share with the board and the public how critical it is for BUSD to seek robust community engagement by caregivers of students with disabilities and special education staff in developing plans for one time COVID funding, including those funds covered in the District Education Stabilization Fund, or ESER. The application for this funding is due on June 7th. All five boards of education within our SALPA are receiving the same message in this month. There are many ways to address learning loss among students, but we must be in we must ensure that evidence based programs and strategies are designed in such a way as to fully include and meet the unique needs of students with disabilities and that students with disabilities are included in district lists of underserved students student populations. Some districts in our SALPA have already created meetings, workshops, and surveys for stakeholders from other groups of high needs and underserved student populations. The CAC urges BUSD to create some kind of similar forum for caregivers and staff serving students with disabilities in the next one to two months to give input on the use of COVID relief funds. We urge you to hear and honor the demands of the disability community. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Um, thank you so much. All right, so now Ms. Chivers, do you know if Ms. Pastica is coming back to speak for PNO?
I'm not sure. I don't believe she has rejoined the meeting.
Okay, how about for the sake of time, let's move on to director comments and then if she comes back, we can let her speak. Unless, do we have any more committee comments or is that it?
I think that's good. So I think we go to board member comments and superintendent.
Awesome. Yeah, so I'm just want to remind everyone that we do have a number of other items to get to as well, so keep them as brief as possible. And who would like to go first?
I'll go just to say, I think you're doing a great job. Keep it up.
All right, thank you. Who wants to go next?
Um, I'll go next. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming out to public comment. I just want to issue a look apology. One minute does feel a little difficult to try to offer an important public comment, but I want to appreciate you by acting President Miller, you're doing a phenomenal job and I want to appreciate and echo your sentiments around folks sending us your your public comment. Please, please, please do that. And again, moving forward, you'll see the new timer in the back where it'll show you the time as it's going to for full transparency and to further assist us with our public comment period. In addition to that, thank you for all of the the public comments and the advocacy that was spoken this evening. I'm really happy and excited about item 12.4 that was moved from consent to action, and I look forward to that conversation and the framing that we'll have for that conversation from the superintendent. So thank you all so much for joining us and thank you for being here.
Awesome. So Ms. Pastica is back in the dais. So how about we let um redo the PNO comments?
Okay. Can you all hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, did you hear anything of what I had to say? Or what I'm talking to the boy?
Dropped off as soon as you got up to panelists, unfortunately.
Okay, all right. So should I just start from the beginning or or where did you say I dropped off?
We didn't hear anything. It was right at the beginning.
Okay, here we go. Thank you for your patience. Okay, so hi, everyone, I'm Terry from the Parent Oversight Committee. We're an advisory body to the School Board on BSEP and BARA, which are two special tax measures. BSEP generates 32 million for the district and two thirds of it goes to supporting smaller class sizes. BARA is the new tax measure just passed that supports teacher salaries and staff recruitment and retention. So the PNO, this is a report of our last PNO meeting that happened on May 11th. We first reviewed the student, the superintendent's budget advisory committee and recognizing that a meeting just happened yesterday, we heard an update on revised enrollment figures for 21 and for the school year 2122, that's going to affect the anticipated budget gap and preliminary plans being looked at to assess cost reductions. The next topic we looked at was a review of the 5% of the BARA budget or about $470,000 that the PNO is authorized to look at, and the budget is dedicated to providing programs designated to strengthen and recruitment retention of educators, especially in historically difficult to fill positions. So in this discussion, it was acknowledged that the PNO committee had asked on April 27th for quantitative information about special ed positions over the last four years, asking about the number of open special ed positions, the rate of turnover, and information along those lines and that of as of May 11th, the information was still being collected because it was a difficult task to complete. We asked questions about when the information was going to be available and it said it would take and the response was it would take weeks, which included possibly not being available before our last meeting, which was May 25th. So the information was requested April 27th and as of May 20 and was uncertain if it was going to be available before our last meeting, May 25th. So then we turned into asking questions about whether stipends could be offered to address teacher turnover, such as that Longfellow, and the response was that stipends would require negotiations and that is unlikely to happen in the fall. And then we revisited a conversation at our last meeting with respect to BARA and the racial inequity as applied to the stark difference in pay between certificated and classified staff. And a question was asked about where that pay inequity standard was set and is it something that can be addressed? And staff confirmed that there is no language in BARA that specifically relates to an increase in compensation applied in any specific way, and that further discussion indicated that this is a complicated issue that was based on various contract negotiations, which you all are in the process of. We then did a second review of BSEP and BARA budgets for the oversight and communications budget, and there was a comment thanking staff for concrete and reasonable outcomes that were outlined in the budget. And we also did a review of carryover Measure A funds to supplement the Office of Family Engagement and Equity for non-staffing costs and 79,000 for library services. And then last, we heard a report from school site councils, how they did over the year and how they adapted to remote meetings and dealing with budget flexibility. So and that was it. We have one more meeting, so you'll hear from us one more time. Thank you so much for your flexibility and letting me come back to give another comment.
No, of course, I mean, we've all we've all experienced online issues in the past year, so fully understand. So thank you so much for coming to speak and sticking it out. All right, so now back to director comments. Who would like to go next?
I can.
All right, go ahead, Dr. S.
I want to echo Director Alper's accolades of President Miller in running the public comment in the committee. You're doing a great job. I want to give special thanks to the students, which I think we all do, is the leadership that our students are taking around these critical environmental issues is both inspiring and tremendously informative. And and it's also inspiring to know that not only are they our future leaders, but there are current leaders. So thank you to the students for coming out tonight. And I, you know, four topics of critical importance were really talked about in public comment today, and I just want to express my support and commitment to working on these issues. And one is really addressing the mental health needs of all of our students in the coming year. I'm not going to say post pandemic because I think COVID is with us for a while. Hopefully, it won't be with us at the crisis level that we're in now or that we have been in because of the increase of vaccinations, but COVID will be around. And the mental health support for what we've come out of and are continuing to to be residually engaged in is going to be critically important. So using our COVID dollars for district wide mental health programs are critically important. I also really want to thank the folks who came out and talked about OFEE and the importance of our family engagement and that the the value of the work that OFEE is doing directly with families at school sites is critically important. And as we have a discussion later about the position of a director, I don't want to lose sight of the conversation that we need to have on how are we looking at leveraging our resources to expand the capacity of our boots on the ground, of getting our family engagement specialists at school sites, really working with families in an evidence based approach with some good evaluation and metrics so that we can really show that we've made a difference, not only in people's everyday lives, but in their ability to engage at all the tables that we have in Berkeley Unified so that they can advocate for their families and for their students. The other issue that we heard a lot, we've been a lot of emails on is Bridge. So again, I just want the public to know that I think Bridge has been one of the most effective programs that we've had at the high school that has really been working to literally bridge our students from middle school into high school and then on to their post secondary experience in life. And so I'm hoping that we can not only make it whole, but we look at our learning loss and the priority for our kids right now and really consider whether or not we can bring in an additional ninth grade cohort to really address the issues that our kids are facing. And we heard from the family members and the parents that this is not only a program that helps students, but that helps the parents help the students, and that's critically important. And then needless to say, in the final comments that that Ms. Washburn said is we have to address the needs of our special ed students. And so I think there there, even though there was only a minute, there was a lot of really valuable input that Sandra and Tasi gave from the PAC, and there was great discussion at the DLEC. Latinos Unidos has been really engaged in the process and a lot of families there. And I want to give a special shout out shout out in my final comment to Ms. Parker for coming out tonight, who has done more than two decades of work in our school district, one of the founding members of Parents of Children of African descent, and has been a tireless advocate for our African American students and all of our families at Berkeley High. And she didn't get to read her whole statement, but it was mailed to us an email and it was from the staff of OFEE and not just her. So I just want to urge all of the board members, if you haven't had a chance to read it yet, please read it. And I know Ms. Parker had some frustration with the minute, but I really want to thank her for coming out tonight.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And Director Abbott, you just unmuted, so I'm assuming you want to go next.
Yes, I'll go next because Julie said most of what I wanted to say. So just want to definitely echo support for the expansion of our OFEE Department Mental Health Services, creating a cohesive plan specifically for both of those initiatives, supporting our Bridge program and our special education students. Those are all our shared values. I also want to say I had a wonderful experience at at the special education seminar that they did as a part of our CCASE requirements. They invited Dr. Mary Bacon to talk about every eye sleep ain't shut. And it was a really good discussion. And so there there's going to be a series, and I just would encourage more families and educators to actually attend because a lot of the educators who attended said that they came to support families and actually got so much out of it themselves. So special congratulations I want to offer to Shawn Messenger and and that office for that work. I also want to celebrate our principals who've done a wonderful job attending all of the Black parent learning circles, another initiative that has arisen really out of the disproportionate data specifically for African American students. And so they really just dug in courageous conversations to be bold and to be present at every meeting. And I was super proud when the consultant who's done work for districts all over said that Berkeley has had the actual the most participation, consistent participation and engaged participation from our principals and our families. So kudos to all of us for that work. And they even left with a template so that people can go back to their local schools and continue that expanded work depending on what's being done already at their school, right? Because there are some groups that may have different unique needs around that parent engagement listening circles. And so having that template that can be used for everyone is amazing. And I was called out, by the way, they said make sure that we continue to fund these initiatives so they can actually support the work. So I'm here to support the work. And lastly, I want to say I really enjoyed myself at the Latinos Unidos Day Berkeley meeting this weekend, learned a lot from our rent board commissioner, Paylo Verde, about the tenant's right to housing. So that was impressive. And we, most of us may know that one of our staff members was one of the first people to be able to take advantage of that new legislation, thanks to our community's support. So that's also a significant achievement, not just for our district, but for our community and for our state and for the affordable housing movements in our nation. And I've learned a lot about vaccination efforts as well as making sure that we had a renewed effort to remain united in action. So I enjoyed that meeting. I enjoyed that time together and I've really had a great week celebrating BUSD accomplishments and the work that we are moving towards to continue. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and Director Vasquez.
Thanks, Acting President Miller. Again, I want to echo everything that my peers have said, super proud of you and you've done such a fantastic job tonight. Thank you so much for serving as the acting president today. Thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. I was especially moved just to hear the students and their advocacy. And I think, you know, if we're doing one thing right, we're we're training future leaders. And I can tell just by the way that our students present and show up. So thank you to our students for coming out. You always impress me. I also wanted to thank Sherry Washburn for your comments tonight about improved community engagement for families of students with disabilities regarding COVID funding. I think a lot of the points that you raised are really important, especially if this is happening in other districts too, like we really need need to. Like, we really need, need to make sure that we're engaging our families of our most vulnerable students. So thank you for, for raising that concern, Sheri. Tonight, I just wanted to thank the Latinos Unidos at Berkeley members for their comments regarding district-wide Spanish language engagement and support from the OFI office and also echoing the need for strong metrics for how we engage with our most vulnerable families. And I know that Ms. Parker couldn't finish her comments, but it was really lovely to see her. And, and I really appreciate her coming out at night because I know she works so hard during the day. So really appreciate you, Ms. Parker. And I know that in those comments, you also echoed the need for strong metrics. And when I hear these comments, both from community groups and from the OFI staff directly, what I hear is a request for accountability for how we serve our students and our families who need us the most. And that's a good thing to advocate for because at the end of the day, as a district, we should be measuring our strategies and their impacts. We have a duty to all of our students and to our families to demonstrate that what we're doing is working. This includes how we're showing up for our African-American learners, Latinx students, English language learners, homeless students, students with disabilities. The Office of Family Engagement and Equity plays a major role in this work and has played a major role for years. And, you know, part of our planning for next year is making sure that we're setting up that office for success and that they have the resources in, in the, in place to, to be successful. And so I echo some of the comments made also by my colleague Julie Sinai to make sure that we're thinking about how we're serving the boots on the ground, right? The people doing the work and how we're supporting them and setting them up for success. I also want to take a minute to thank the Cragmont School Community and Councilmember Susan Wengraff for joining me in a discussion next week about pedestrian safety issues on Marin Avenue. And I don't know how many of you know this, but there was a horrible collision on Marin Avenue. I was picking up my children at that time and saw it firsthand. And my heart goes out to the victims, to their loved ones, to the entire community. And because this terrible collision happened so close to one of our schools, BUSD, the Cragmont PTA, Councilmember Wengraff and city staff are coming together to join, to, to join in on a community town hall on May twenty-sixth at seven PM. If, whether your child goes to Cragmont or you live near the school, I encourage you to attend to see how we can be really thoughtful about how we address pedestrian safety concerns at our schools and just create safe streets for our students. Our students are among the most vulnerable folks, you know, little legs on the street. And we need to make sure that the streets around our schools are safe for them. So this is something I'm very passionate about. I hope you join us in our discussion on May twenty-sixth. And again, I really thank my colleague on City Council, Susan Wengraff, for pulling in city staff so we can create a safe environment for, for our students and for the greater communities near our schools. So thank you all. I'm looking forward to the discussion tonight and thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. And yeah, just for me personally, I want to second everything my colleague said as well. Definitely think, especially student mental health, very important. You know, this year, we don't even say how taxing it's been over and over again. We all know. And I think looking, I'm really looking forward to hopefully brainstorming super specific ways we can actually address mental health because it's not, mental health is not one size fits all for the services we offer. It's so many intricate puzzle pieces and stuff and just everything and everyone has some experience. And I think that's the main mindset we need to go in when talking about mental health. All right, Dr. Stevens, do you have any comments as well?
Yes, thanks so much, Acting President Miller. I too want to say you're doing a great job. Just a few comments this evening. First, thanks to everybody for being here this evening. It's really great to have so much public participation at this critical moment of the school year. This is always the moment in the year when advocacy is important, when your perspectives on the services we offer to families and students is important. So please do stay engaged with us as we go through the budgeting and planning season. We are coming into this sort of final four meetings of this school year. And in the three meetings following this one, many important conversations to take place about budgets, about our local control and accountability plan, and as well, the ways in which we'll propose to spend the COVID relief dollars that are coming to the district from the state and federal government. This week is Classified Employee Recognition Week, and I would like to call out a few exceptional individuals whose names went out in a letter from me to all of our classified staff just this week. And just check this out. This is really a remarkable level of commitment and service to our students and families. So at forty years of service here in Berkeley Unified School District, congratulations to two individuals, Sylvia Curriel and Barbara Melian. Thank you for this really remarkable contribution, forty years of service here in Berkeley Unified. At thirty-five years of service, Ronald Boykin, congratulations to you and thank you so much. And a group having served thirty years here in Berkeley Unified, Nelson Abapo, Marie Ferguson at the high school, Mary, Mary Jackson, Romila Kana and Mark Ramia, who actually spoke during public comment tonight, still engaged. Thank you all. We acknowledged many more employees for their service over the course of many years, but to this very special group of folks who have been giving it their all for such a long period, thank you and our acknowledgements. I also want to just point the attention of members of public to an informational item in tonight's agenda. We're planning to bring this item back to the board for further discussion, but included as an informational item is something called the Expanded Learning Plan, ELO. This is a plan that has been created mostly by one of our administrators in, in keeping with feedback that we've been collecting through multiple town halls, committee engagements, parent workshops. This describes about six million dollars of expenses that are coming from the state government that are intended to expand learning opportunities and student support in the coming year. So very special acknowledgement and thanks to Director of State, Federal and Special Projects, Michelle Sinclair, for putting that together. Please check out that draft. It's out there for public comment. And we look forward to bringing it back to the board for further discussion and eventual approval in coming meetings. And then also more good news. We didn't have time this afternoon to make modifications to our budget presentation, but we do now have preliminary figures from our enrollment office about round two enrollment information. And it now looks like we are on our way, we can say, with a fair degree of confidence to a full enrollment recovery for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So this sort of fear about the cliff that we've described in budget presentations previously appears not to be in our future. We're going to watch closely, of course, but I share this, these numbers came to me just at about two o'clock this afternoon from our enrollment office. So as Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsbe presents on the budget a little later this evening, please know that we will begin to update those multi-year projections, but I'm really pleased to share the news about the, the positive trend in enrollment. I'd also like to point out for members of the public that included in our consent calendar this evening is a contract related to student engagement process for middle school enrollment. So please look out for more information from the district about how to get involved in that important conversation taking place in our community in the coming months. And then finally, included in the consent calendar are three important administrative positions, director positions for the Office of Family Engagement and Equity for Local Resources. That's the position that supports our BSEP and BARA funding, as well as a director position for the Berkeley Research Evaluation and Assessment Department, or what we call BRA. Please do know that each of these sort of recommendations and anticipated approvals represents only one step in a multi-step process. Assuming that these position descriptions are approved tonight, this only means that we've approved a job description. Doesn't mean that we're putting people in these positions and doesn't mean that we are finished with conversations about these departments. So I just wanted to offer that little bit of context about these three positions. And I know we'll talk a little bit further about the Director of OFI position a little bit later in the evening. So please stay tuned with us. We've got a constantly changing and interesting sort of set of meetings in front of us. And we really do appreciate the community's participation at all of our meetings and your ongoing perspectives about how we can serve best our students and families. So with that, Acting President Miller, I'm going to turn it back to you. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. All right, so now we are approving the consent calendar with the changes we made at the beginning of the meeting. So can I do, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar for tonight?
I'll move that.
All right.
I'll second.
Awesome. Liz, can you call the roll?
Director Vazada?
Yes.
Director Babbitt?
She's trying to say yes.
Okay.
I can read her lips. Yes.
Vice President DeBenois?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
And Acting President Miller?
Yes. All right, so now we're moving to our first discussion item. And just as a heads up for the public, we are jumping between discussion items. Then we're doing two action items, then we're going back to discussion, just in case you saw that on the agenda. All right, so first, our first discussion item is an update on BUSD school reopening. And I believe, Dr. Stevens, you're presenting that one.
That's correct, and thank you very much. So this evening, I'd love to offer a few updates about the fall particularly. I'm going to focus in on information that is very recent as of Friday of just last week, included in some of Governor Newsom's comments and in his May fourteenth, May revision to the state budget. So very specifically, I'll talk a little bit about sort of statements made by the governor, reassuring statements about school reopening in the fall. And then as well, speak about distance learning. The governor has also commented about distance learning and the shape that it will take. So let's dig in. So first, I want to call out a statement made by the governor. Again, this is just very late last week. He is as well saying, like we have been saying, that COVID-related sort of exceptions to the way we do school will come to a close at the end of this year. Very specifically, he's saying that the legal statutes in place in the state of California will make clear that in-person attendance is indeed a requirement for all students in California. And this is very much in line with stances that the Berkeley Board of Education has taken, that we are allowing labor agreements to expire those COVID-related labor agreements and plan in full to revert to the existing pre-pandemic labor agreements that defined our school day. And in fact, this is largely our response to the request for plans for school reopening. If you'd like to see what school is going to look like when we get to August, then think about what it looked like in, in pre-pandemic. Plan to show up at the hour that we did, plan to leave at the hour that we did. All of these sort of special circumstances that defined this last challenging year are coming to a close. And the governor is sending a very clear signal about that as well. There are a number of professional organizations as well in reading the May budget proposal that are also confirming this. Here we have a statement from AXA, which is the Association of California School Administrators, commenting on their read of the May budget proposal and its call out of independent study is the only permissible option for students and families who wish not to attend in-person schooling in next year. We continue to have growing reasons for confidence about on-campus learning in addition to the very clear signals by our political leaders in Sacramento. This includes the fact that staff has had now ample opportunity now for many months to be vaccinated. We are participating actively in a partnership with the city of Berkeley to provide vaccination opportunities for our young people, including students who twelve and older. We've been hosting vaccine clinics in concert with City of Berkeley just across the street from the high school. And this week, in fact, we've been at Longfellow Middle School, offering vaccines to students from all of our middle schools. We'll continue these vaccine clinics and continue to publish information about how young people can be vaccinated in anticipation of a full return to school in August. We are also very closely following what is right now mostly media reports on the potential for COVID vaccine availability for students as young as elementary school. And lots of folks saying that by the time September comes along, that they're expecting that there will be FDA emergency authorization for students that young as well. So all of that is to say, even more reason for confidence. Even so, we are going to continue to use many of the safety protocols that will keep them in place. Some, we imagine, are not at all disruptive to the school, to the school schedule. And then we're also trying to build into our planning some just-in-cases, some what-if scenarios so that we have an added layer of assurance that we will continue on in in-person learning in the fall. Here's a few of those questions. These are again, just what-if questions. We're trying to think through what, what if, you know, some things happen next year that might prevent a full-time schedule. So without reading all of these aloud, we are contemplating sort of what happens if there were more restricted COVID protocols that might require cohorting. And for this reason, we're actually working with our secondary administrators to try and build a master schedule that as much as possible includes cohorts so that if we needed it, we could use it. Again, this is not Plan A, this is Plan B. We're also attempting to reorganize the use of space in our secondary schools to make sure that the largest groups are assigned to the largest rooms. We don't have any reason to think that we need to do that. This is again, just in case, planning in, in the event that there become more restrictive protocols for next year. And we're also trying to think ahead about air quality index and smoke events, knowing that we will be heading back into fire season and what might happen in those circumstances. And then as we're now used to as Californians, thinking about PSPS, a planned power shortage, and how we would approach that kind of situation. So we'll continue to sort of publish more thinking about these contingencies, but I want to emphasize to members of the public, this is Plan B thinking. This is not the primary plan. The primary plan is to go back to normal. And we ask everybody to draw on their experiences of what a pre-pandemic school looked like in order to know what we're doing. Let's focus in a little bit on independent study. So one of the most significant sort of comments in the governor's May revise is that independent study will be the only permissible distance learning or rather not a option to in-person learning that will be permitted in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we do know right now a little bit about the needs of our families as they're starting to look at August of twenty-one. This is sort of representation and albeit a partial representation of elementary families who are currently choosing distance learning and what they're saying about their plans or their aspirations to, for the coming school year. And so I'll call your attention of the two hundred and five responses from families who are currently in distance learning. Seventy-seven percent, seventy-eight are saying that they are planning to come back to in-person learning. This leaves a little over twenty percent of that, of the proportion of our families who are in distance learning saying that they would likely seek some kind of alternative to in-person learning. And they're stating that there's a variety of reasons, including medical and personal reasons. So if this sort of pattern holds, we can see that there's going to be very few families at the elementary level interested in sort of sticking with an alternative to in-person learning. And it's for these families that we are now sort of offering information about Berkeley Independent Study. So let me describe a little bit about what Berkeley Independent Study is. And then we'll continue on from there. So Berkeley Independent Study is, has been an option available to Berkeley School, School families for many, many years. There's a K eight version of this program. And in this particular program, there is a Berkeley Independent Studies teacher assigned to collaborate with a family. There's an expectation that families will be providing all the supervision at home as well as support for student learning. The main role of the BIS teacher is to serve as a coach, to provide curriculum support for a parent or guardian who will be both providing some teaching and supervising instruction. At the nine through twelve level, students meet with their teacher once a week for ninety minutes. And again, the expectation is that students will be able to work independently on their assignments and that there is both supervision and support, sort of instructional or home teacher support at approximately twenty to twenty-five hours per week. We are right now sort of interested in learning more about the potential demand or expanded demand for this program. And so we're planning to begin some additional analysis of family demand and we'll begin to communicate with families more about what a BIS option could look like. This could have implications for our budget. It could mean that we might be looking at a one-year expansion of our Berkeley Independent Study staffing in order to meet what might be expanded demand among our families for an independent study model. There are a few questions that Governor Newsom and the legislature's direction to us raise for us. We don't have answers to those questions at the moment. They include whether or not a family who selects Berkeley Independent Study would also maintain concurrently their enrollment in their, in their current school. It also, we have to do some thinking about how much flexibility we would be able to permit families to move back and forth between an in-person enrollment and an independent study model. Very likely that will be far less flexibility than we've been able to grant in this year. And then as well, for elementary families especially, it is very likely not going to be the case that we would be able to provide a full set of online enrichment and elective experiences because all of those teachers' time and resources will be devoted to full-time on-campus instruction. So our plan moving forward is to begin to develop family communications for, for those who might be interested in a Berkeley Independent Study option. We're also going to be working with our special education and TWI staff to think about what it might look like to be able to offer. to be able to offer those services in a BIS setting. We'll be offering further communication with our families, including opportunities for live interactions with families who would like to understand more about what Berkeley Independent Study is and what it has to offer. We know that for every 20 students who may choose a BIS option, that we may need to increase funding to that program by about one full-time equivalent, one FTE or one teacher. And so we'll be looking very closely at sort of what the demand might be for that program. And then most likely, we would use the existing Berkeley Independent Study enrollment procedure, which is already well-defined and managed by our enrollment office. So with that, I'm going to conclude this very brief presentation. These, I hope, feel like helpful updates about just information that's coming from Sacramento to school districts only in the last few days. Very happy to take questions from the board and we'll do my very best to answer them. So thank you very much. And I should say, I was not able to see. We are joined this evening by principal of Berkeley Independent Study Heidi Weber. Thank you very much, Miss Weber, for being here this evening. And glad to have you along as, as there may be questions about BIS from our, from our board.
All right. So yeah, once again, thank you for the presentation. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. And it seems like Director Alper. Okay. So how about we start with Director Alper?
Thank you, President Miller. Thank you for that. And I appreciate the sort of clarity of that, what we mean by the plan for the fall is to just show up at school when school starts and it'll be like it was before for the vast majority of our students. And if we need to clarify that in any other communications, you know, to, to parents before school gets out in June so that there's, you know, no, no question or concern about that. I think that would be a good thing to do, but but I appreciate that. I just wanted to make one comment for the record about masks. And I don't think you mentioned it, but when you said that there, there might be some mitigation measures that would, that we would put in place that won't affect the scheduling. I want to, I, I know it's premature, but, but I want to, I want us to be careful about just assuming that requiring masks and face coverings is kind of just a no-cost safety measure that, that we can just impose on, on all our kids coming back in the fall. If it's not necessary, then, then I, then we shouldn't do it. And I think that we need to recognize that for kids, I mean, for all of us, but I think particularly for kids who are just learning how to navigate social situations and trying to hear each other. Wearing face coverings is not, does not come without cost. And so if that's what public health guidelines and guidance requires us to do, then, then obviously we should do it, but there's a real, I think it's a real detriment to our kids to have to wear masks in school. And if they don't have to, we shouldn't make them. So I know it's again, it's premature, but I wanted to flag that as an issue that I'm concerned about as we head into the fall. Thanks.
All right, Director Snack.
Thank you, President Miller. One comment and a couple of questions. I just want to remind folks that actually with the vaccination partnership that we've got with the city of Berkeley, that we're not only encouraging vaccinations of children 12 and older, but any of their family members or household members or friends can also come and get vaccinated. So while we know the prevalence of the impact of COVID on children is while there are some cases of extreme impacts overwhelmingly, there's not, but a lot of fear is the infection on family members. So I just encourage anyone who's thinking about getting their 12 to 18, 17-year-old vaccinated to bring your family member along with you so that they can get vaccinated as well. I have two questions. One is in the survey data of the 205, what, what's the total number? What percent of families submitted that survey so that we can kind of have a little bit of a perspective? And then the second question is, can you explain to folks why? So right now we have the Distance Learning Academy kind of framework. Why could we not, and I'm not recommending we do, I'm trying to understand, why could we not potentially staff a distance learning academy for, say, we had a minimum of X students who wanted to continue for various reasons to do distance learning. And you still got, so you know, I guess one of the questions is, would we get ADA, you know, like what are some of the state issues? But could you talk a little bit about that? Cause I, my hunch is that's going to be a question that's coming up.
Yeah, thanks for both those questions. So we currently have enrolled 750 elementary families in distance learning. And of that number, I think it was 205 responded to that survey. So it was a relatively low response rate. We did get a lot of emails back from families who said, I'm not ready to answer any survey yet. And that they hope to have more clarity. They also would like just to hang on to see how the pandemic evolves before they answer any questions. So there's a little bit of, I guess hesitation that we heard back is from some families.
That would have been great to include in the, in the survey results.
But folks who just see anecdotal.
How many emails you got back saying not ready yet?
Ah, yeah, yeah, we could pull that together. In terms of this, this, the question about, you know, doing a distance learning academy, it's something that we're going to start thinking about. We imagine it might be possible at the elementary level where we have multiple subject teachers and one teacher teaches all subjects. I'm a bit more skeptical about the ease of a distance learning academy for secondary students. Unless we were to sort of pick up the services of like an online learning platform, something like UC Scout or Edgenuity. These are options on the table. You can tell that the sort of statements being made from Sacramento are very, very broad. We have yet to receive any rider language from Sacramento describing further what, what prohibitions there may be on distance learning or the requirements for picking up ADA. So I just don't know those things yet. So we're going to do some preliminary studying of options while we wait for more information from the state about what permissible attendance looks like.
Great. Thank you. All right, Director Vasilev.
Hi, thank you for that presentation, Superintendent Stevens. Nice to see you, Ms. Weber. I just had a quick question about vaccination clinics. I know we experimented with the high school one. Do you see? Well, I have two questions. One, do you see that, that kind of work expanding in the fall for the younger grades? And have there been conversations with public health about what that could look like? And my second question, you know, we're all planning for like return to school as, as normal as possible, but bus transportation, what is that going to look like in the fall? And are we going to be able to serve after-school sites like we did before, like pre-pandemic, right? Because I think that what we saw is that a lot of our after-school programs in Berkeley kind of folded, went out of business, you know, stopped operating during, during the pandemic. So it'd be good to know like if, if the district will be providing transportation or not, or what, where the transportation conversations for the fall land. So to the expansion of clinics for the younger grades and, and the transportation issue for the fall and how parents and families can prepare.
What I can say about the clinics potentially for younger students is that we have a very willing partner in the city of Berkeley. As soon as the authorization for students 12 and older hit, they were jumping on it. Within a couple of days, we were already on school campuses offering vaccinations. And I know that the commitment to continuing vaccinations at the elementary level will be there. So we just don't know when that authorization will take place, but I expect that we're going to be able to offer those kinds of clinics to students and families as that authorization is provided to elementary schools. So we do believe in on-campus vaccinations. We think it's a great way for entire families to get vaccinated and would like to be able to continue in that direction. You know, we don't yet have guidance on transportation specifically. I'm assuming in the governor's statements and statements by leading legislators in Sacramento that there is going to be an elimination of the more restrictive sort of components of the health protocols, including cohorting and social distancing. I think that's where we're going. And at the point that we get there and there are no social distancing requirements on buses, then we will be back to 100% of our bus transportation. And our plan is not to change any of those bus routes. So that's offering the full contingent of elementary transportation as well as after-school transportation. So it's still a little early to say, because we haven't received crystal clear language. But all signals are that those more restrictive protocols will expire and simply won't apply and when we get back to school in August.
Oh, great. And when you say after-school programs, you're talking about programs like the JCC, like the programs pre-pandemic.
Yes. So just to return back to our full complement of transportation services.
Great.
All right, Director Babett. Just also, I want everyone to keep in mind before Dr. Babett goes that we've allowed 30 minutes to this specific item and we also have more items to go after this as well.
Thank you, Acting President Miller. Appreciate that guidance. I just had a quick comment, things that I was thinking about as a parent that would give me confidence around school reopening full, five full days, especially at the middle and high school level. And it really was around the programming and how counselors and administrators are setting up their class schedules and their programming. And so when you talk about the, the cohorts or the stable groups or that model as a Plan B, is that because we're starting right now with thinking that in mind when we do our scheduling and our programming and administrative work? If you could just expand on that. And also really quick, Principal Weber, thank you for all that you've done with independent studies. I had so many people say to me, why didn't we just follow the independent studies model? So kudos to that work.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. You know, we won't be able to build a Berkeley High School schedule that's fully cohortized. So what the administrative team there is doing is just trying to build the schedule so that it can be more modular. So that there's less sort of in, less overplay between kids going from one class to another. So take the U9 program with its hives. They're trying to build students' course schedule so that there's less overlap between hives. So that they essentially can, are more easily co-horted. What they're not doing is restricting students' class access. Students were asked to sign up for courses in the way they do every year. They're building a six-period schedule where all courses will be offered. Every elective, every AP class is being put into student schedules. So the extent that that can be cohortized, they're trying it, but it's not at the expense of the act of access to courses, nor is it an adjustment to the master schedule. It's a little bit easier at the middle school level. Not simply smaller. You've got sort of fewer teachers and students to work with. And so again, same effort, but not at the expense of students' course access, nor at the expense of the master schedule or just students' daily schedule.
And so are we making this statement that we are not going to be as restrictive as we've been in the past around stable groups and cohorts? Is that what I'm hearing, like a confirmation from you on that issue?
Well, I, I, I don't read tea leaves, unfortunately. I'm, every signal I think from the state is that the state is planning to drop the protocols from their expectations from schools and specifically social distancing and cohorting. I think, you know, the governor in making his very clear statement that we're going back must be fully aware that it was those two conventions particularly that were really restricting a full-time return. So I'm only sort of interpreting those signals. We're obviously going to keep looking at public health guidance. But I do think that those things, given all the positive trends, will be eliminated as expectations from schools and that we will be going back full-time.
Great. Thank you. All right, Dr. Brown or Vice President Brown.
Thank you, Acting President Miller. Superintendent Stevens, thank you so much for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. First, an appreciation to Director Sidney, who who raised the question around a continued distance learning opportunities. Opportunity, Superintendent Stevens, I wanted to ask in regards to the family survey that yielded data around family unreadiness. When are we planning to roll out a second opportunity to receive, to, to give that survey out to families again and to receive, receive that data again?
Yeah, our, our current thinking is that we would like to be able to develop a description of this program, meaning the independent studies program and be able then to solicit survey information in the presence of an actual program option. This first survey didn't really present families with a clear option. It only asked them, what do you think you might do? But we couldn't ask them the question, what do you think you might do if independent study were your only alternative to in-person learning? So staff's thinking right now is that we should get that information prepared, offer some opportunities for families to learn more and then, and then do the survey so that families feel far more prepared about the answers they're giving.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that answer. I was going to advocate for that. So I'm happy to hear that that's your thinking around that. In addition to that, you mentioned going through the process of vetting potential distance learning programs. And I wanted to ask about that. I know that in your presentation, it says that BUSD may not offer enrichment programs or opportunities for families. As we are vetting potential distance learning programs for families who may need it or need that type of support, can I also advocate that there is an enrichment component of that in an effort to ensure that we have equitable experiences for all our students and also equitable outcomes? Okay. And then finally, Superintendent Stevens, I wanted to ask about the one, I guess the holistic approach to reopening and what are, what the district's thinking is around mentally preparing students to come back to campus, right? And all of the sensory overload that could potentially happen with students who are not enrolled in on-campus instruction now. And what does that look like? Does it look like videos that are, are sent home that talks about our protocols for students, protocols for families? Does it look like additional town hall meetings? Does it look like our psychology team reaching out or hosting a town hall meeting? What is that? What's our thinking around that?
It's a great question. So a lot of the I can sort of point to the way that our educators have approached this, the, the school reopening in the spring is a great example of how I imagine we will do that in the fall. What we saw in the spring, I'll focus in on the elementary school, is both professional development for principals and teachers about a trauma-informed approach to reopening. We also saw advisory lessons going out from groups of counselors to teachers at our middle school level. On our campuses, we're seeing a great deal of patience and, and not a rush back into academic instruction, but lots of focus on projects, on team building. There's sort of a different feel on our campuses and that's very deliberate on the part of our principals and educators to provide students with a frankly, a slower and also humane and respectful sort of restart to this on-campus experience. Very recently, we asked all of our schools to go through a planning process. The school board made available what's called the restorative restart grant. Our schools have now thousands of dollars to be able to apply to their restart. And we asked them to first and foremost, center on relationships with students and families. So we're collecting in those grant proposals back from schools and schools actually have resources now to propose the ways in which they'll make for a more humane and trauma-informed return to on-campus schooling. So those are just a few things that are going on now. We're also keeping our ears open to other good ideas about how to make sure that we have a good and strong start together.
Thank you. And I have some, oh, the last thing, sorry. Are, how are we inviting our teacher leaders to the table when we think about vetting programs for, for distance learning and also to receive our students back on campus, but more importantly for distance learning?
So there's a little bit of work that's been done on this. And by vetting programs, what we're talking about is commercial online learning platforms. Something like Edgenuity or UC Scout. We've really only been looking at these at the high school level. And we have actually been asking high school folks to take a look at these two. There was actually some planning work done. We brought in our former, former BHS principal to do some work with teacher leaders to sort of look at a couple of those leading programs right now. So we have some information in our pocket. We have to compare those programs to the independent study program. We have yet to understand what the state will say is permissible attendance. We don't have that information. And then I think finally probably come up with a recommendation that I'd love to get out to teachers just to solicit their feedback about the overall value of this program. And I think all of this, we should keep in mind is likely going to be in the context of, of an independent study program, not in the context of students attending their homeschool any longer.
All right. So the time that we gave to this specific item has passed over. So unless it's super quick, Directors and I, we should probably move on.
I'll just, I'll just point it out and we don't need to discuss it, but I'm, I'm curious to learn more about with the professional or private online programs, if parents would be enrolling in that program and not in the district, or if the district would be host to the program and how, again, what's permissible in relation to ADA. So that's something that I don't understand and will look forward to learning more. And then I do wonder, so I And then I do wonder, so I know the high school level of independent study. Students are allowed and Principal Weber, you can confirm this if you want, but my understanding is is that students are allowed to take some courses at Berkeley High. So there's the ability to engage with in-person learning and in-person students. I don't know if that's the case also at the middle school. But I think if we're looking at the program going down to the elementary school, would we be able to look at some creative alterations to the independent study model? That might allow students to have that periodic ability to be on campus for either after-school programs or enrichment classes. So again, we don't have to answer it all now, but I think those would be things that might be worth exploring so that especially at the elementary level, it's a very different dynamic than what distance learning is now where it's very teacher supported through Zoom. Because it looks like independent study at the elementary is really parent-teacher. And then just some support from a credential teacher. So I don't know how much flexibility there is to be creative and looking at the program a little differently than we normally have.
Should I add a couple clarifying questions or not? Sorry, we really have to move on, but this is a conversation to follow up for in the future.
Definitely email some answers to.
And what we're happy to share more is we sort of learn from the state what's permissible and as we do some of our own program design on this. Ms. Weber, thanks very much for joining us this evening. We really appreciate seeing you here.
All right. And now we're going to move on to our first action item. Which is about the Barra Education Recruitment Retention Development Budget. And I'm pretty sure Ms. Barry, you're presenting that one.
Actually, it'll be Assistant Superintendent Trias Espinoza. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent, as well as the public who are listening and watching us. So I'm presenting about the 5% of the Barra funds. So when we went forward looking at the Barra plan and went forward with the all of this, we looked at per holding a part of the money, 5% aside to specifically work on recruitment retention and what we call development. So this is just a reminder of what the language was that was actually put in to the act. So for this next year, we've completed our first year in the program and have had quite a bit of success. So position that was created this year and has seen success is our new classified professional development support position. It's actually a coordinator and we plan on continuing that and for this next year. A position that we unfortunately were not able to fill this last year, but are working on currently filling for this next year is a special education development slash IEP coach to help support our special education teachers in how to handle the paperwork and the accommodations and working with their general ed peers. And hopefully to help us to have a better experience for our students. We are continuing our district induction coach position, which supports our brand new teachers that are just getting their credentials. Our peer assistance review coach, which assists our veteran teachers who need extra support. And our classified employee teacher pathway coach, who supports our fellows who are in our BPACT program. Which is a grant from the state that helps us to be able to recruit our classified employees and help support them through their programs. We help pay for tuition for them to be able to get teaching credentials. And this person helps to support them through that process, helps them navigate the process and then also helps us to know when they're ready for either being student teaching or ready for an internship credential so that we can hire them into a teaching position. For this next year, one of the new positions we are looking to create is a TSA Teacher on Special Assignment for Recruitment, Retention and Support at a .6 FTE. And that would be a position to help us to create materials and help us to figure out ideas to better work with different processes to recruit and retain our teachers. As well as in terms of support, supporting the the new teacher orientation as well as a substitute teacher orientation. And improve that so that we are maintaining and keeping our teachers our substitute teachers trained as well and updated in the latest greatest things about Berkeley. We also have included in here program support, which includes material supplies and contracts and a certain amount of money for recruitment and retention stipends. That will allow us to help to recruit and retain people in our hard-to-fill positions. We've sort of divided the program up into sort of three pieces. So just really quickly, the first one has to do with classified staff pathways and professional development to help support and build capacity within our classified staff. And enhancing our induction and teaching support programs. To support our current teachers and recruitment support for hard-to-fill positions to make sure that we're recruiting highly qualified teachers of color and other educators of color. And so this is just a little bit more information about the TSA and the ideas that we have for that position, which would be helping them to support, they would support our efforts to fill all positions with strong candidates, including a focus on teachers of color. They would support year-round recruitment efforts and the orientation for new teachers to welcome them to the district. As well as supporting a more substantial substitute orientation and ongoing support system for our substitute teachers. This is the current revenue and expenditures that are planned, as well as you'll see that we have a fund balance due to not filling every position that we had intended to for this year. So we are not deficit spending in this 5% at this point. And we are continuing to budget so that we are able to carry out these goals continuing forward. And that was the quick and dirty presentation that I have for you. So now I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much. All right. I want to wait till maybe it returns to full panel, or it's fine, either way. All right, Vice President Brown.
My original question was about the efforts for the TSA position to ensure that we hire and recruit for more people of color, but Assistant Superintendent Espinoza, you already identified that. So just thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Also, I'm not sure if the public can see everyone while the screen is being shared. So maybe we could take it down there as well after. All right, perfect. Thank you. And then Director Babbitt.
My question is around the TSA for retention and recruitment of teachers of color. Just wondering if we could create that job description so that we have some flexibility in case we find a candidate who may not be a credential teacher on special assignment, but does have that kind of HR training and that kind of ability to bridge the gap. We were really fortunate the last time that we had a kind of a teacher in our community who filled that role. But I just want to make sure that we don't limit the possibilities in our hiring process. Because it really made a huge difference when we had someone literally focused and building those bridges and building those partnerships with the principals so that you know, when they made the recommendations around the new hires that the principal kind of had some kind of comfort because of that recommendation, because of that teacher that was on special assignment. So I think their position itself is extremely important, but just want to make sure that we, you know, when it's not necessary that we don't limit our scope of how we could hire and fill that need.
I agree. I think that one of the things that we want to do is first do a good effort of really looking to recruit somebody who is a teacher of special assignment. If we don't find the right candidate, then definitely looking at what obstacles have we put in our own way? And what can we do differently to be able to recruit somebody who will support us and will be able to help us to reach our goals?
All right, next, Director Sinai.
Just a quick, thank you for the presentation. Exciting to see that we're moving forward on this. This is maybe an update. And maybe I'm on old information, but you know, there used to be. And I think this is a little bit of what maybe Director Babbitt was talking about too, funding that had been identified in the in the supplemental dollars to work on recruitment and retention. And there was a part-time staff person who did that. Does that position no longer exist?
It was folded into the Barra plan last school year when we were doing, when we first got this money. So when we were first making the plan for Barra, that was folded into this plan. No, we eliminated the actual position because it had been vacant. And changed it into programmatic money. And now we're going back the other direction to create a position and to go that direction to see. Again, we're only gone through our first year, and so we're still trying to figure out, like I said, what are the obstacles we're putting in our own way? And what do we want to do that will help us improve and meet our goals?
Okay, thank you.
All right. And last, Director Positiv.
Thank you so much, Samantha, for that presentation. I just have a quick question. Do you know, like, what are our goals for recruitment of teachers, teachers of color? And also, do you know if this TSA position would work with other nonprofits that help neighboring districts recruit teachers of color? So I'm thinking of like a particular nonprofit in San Francisco called Urban Ed that helps to recruit teachers of color for us at USD. And so are there, you know, networks that are there already like pre-identified networks and community-based organizations where they can help pull some of those instructors for us? And also just if you know, at a high level, like what are our recruitment goals for teachers of color demographics that we're looking at?
Yeah, so our goal is to increase our recruitment. And I believe the exact goal is to have 50% more teachers of color than what we currently have. And that's been an ongoing goal. And so, which is a is it's not the biggest goal in the world, but it is something that we're working on trying to move towards. In terms of networking, I'm not familiar with the Urban Ed, but I I think that we can look into what how they work with San Francisco. See what we can do in terms of building those connections. We have done a lot of work to build connections to a lot of the universities locally. But we also want to continue to expand. And so if you have any other resources that you would like me to look into, please share.
Yeah, I definitely.
I have a few too. I'll share some, Samantha. Sorry, Director Positiv.
And I know that Director Babbitt had also already shared a resource with me. People to help us network and and hire people.
Sorry, Samantha, sorry. I was just saying, when you say 50%, what's the, what's the number?
So I'd have to look it up. I don't have it memorized. Unfortunately, I'm sorry. So but yeah, it's to keep increasing is basically our goal to keep increasing the number of teachers of color that we're hiring every year and retaining. So it's not just hiring them, but keeping them. So.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. And if there aren't any more questions, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'll move it.
Is there a second? Awesome. All right, Ms. Shires, can you call the role?
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Director Alton?
Yes.
Yes. All right, perfect time. So for our next item, it's another presentation. Is this one being given by Ms. Barry?
It is. Thank you. I'll share my screen. Thanks. One moment, please. All right. So I'm pleased, good evening, Board and Community. I am Superintendent and Community. I am pleased to present to you this evening of what is the last of 12 presentations on budgets funded through the BSEP and Barra special tax measures. And this one is a combination of the both the BSEP and Barra funds. In that BSEP, the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program has written into the measure that 2% of the revenues can go to support of the of the Planning and Oversight Committee, also known as the PNO Committee, and School Site Councils and Community Engagement Communications and Public Information Services. And then Barra, the Berkeley Educators Recruitment and Retention Act, has 1% of its revenues dedicated to costs related to planning, monitoring, evaluating, and reporting the use of these funds. So with those two acting in concert, this is just a quick overview. And of course, you have a more substantial description of the program in in your board packet of how these two oversight funds collaborate to fund positions and other purposes for the coming year. And I'll address, some of these items include a reorganization of the way that this work is being carried out. So the proposal is that for next year, the there be a Director of Local Resources and Partnerships. There is currently my position, which is Director of BSEP and Community Relations. And as I believe most folks know, I'm planning on transitioning out of that position and that gives us an opportunity to do what I think is probably an overdue look at how to best serve the purposes of oversight of the measure as well as other attendant purposes. So there would be co-funding of this position through BSEP and Barra. And then we currently have a BSEP program specialist, so that would be retitled but not substantially changed and continue as we are actually doing in this current year, co-funding that position between BSEP and Barra. A public information officer that's currently funded would become a communications manager. And I'm going to go into a little bit more depth about what each of these are going to look like, but I'm just going to show you now what the funding looks like. Because BSEP allows for funding for communications, but Barra does not. That funding would come from BSEP and the remainder would come as it already does from the general fund, .15. Translation Interpretation Specialist, .67 from BSEP, that would continue with the remainder coming from the general fund. A new position, actually one that we've proposed for some time, but we would like to really move on this, Communication Specialist, .5 from BSEP and then .1 from Barra. That .1 would be focusing on communications pertaining to recruitment and retention. And then some small elements in each budget, contracted services that support primarily communications. I can go into detail if you'd like on what those are, everything from our various email subscriptions, language line, et cetera. Printing and mailing, that's for our annual community report and a few other purposes. Equipment and supplies, professional development, membership cell phones and hourly support, most of that coming from BSEP, small amounts from Barra. What this does in terms of each budget is for BSEP, the 2% yields for next year, an estimated just over 650,000. The proposed budget is less than that, so we are not drawing down on it. In fact, we're contributing to the fund balance. But my aim with all of our BSEP budgets, as I explained in the prior presentations, is to try to get us to the point that we are sustaining the essential purposes of each resource without deficit spending. And we do happen to have a fund balance here that actually carried over from a some some positions that weren't filled. So we do have some funds there available, but we would like to really save that for rainy day. For Barra, the 1% budget, so just under $100,000. For Barra, the one percent budget, so just under a hundred thousand dollars. Again, that, what the, what I just showed you is going to draw on that such that we are contributing slightly to the, to the fund balance, but we are at least level with our revenues. Last but not least, we do have from the prior measure, the prior BSEP measure, Measure A, some carryover, again, most of that carryover having to do with the transition in staffing that happened that preceded me. That allows us to provide for some special projects. And that's, but it isn't a place to do some, any sustained staffing. I've estimated that we will need some funding as I transition out of the, the position and in support of some special projects. But, and we're getting to the point where that amount, although substantial initially, is dwindling. This is really what I'd like to focus on, which is the proposed reorganization. And again, as I mentioned, I, something I've been wanting to address for, for a while. The position of Director of BSEP and Community Relations, which is my current title. I have joked to people that I should have realized when I took the job with the word "and" in the title, that it's really two jobs. And it probably is at least that. It does have two significant components, the oversight of BSEP and then the oversight of communications and community relations. And that has, has grown substantially. I've done my best to ensure thoughtful oversight of BSEP and now Barra measures. Those now represent twenty-five percent of our district resources and while simultaneously overseeing communications and community relations. And you all know that this school district, as many, are at the nexus of so many issues for our community that communications and community relations work really requires substantial attention and resources to do it well. So to that end, I'm proposing, now that we have the Barra added to, to BSEP, that it's time to shift our thinking back again to ensure that there's really careful and focused oversight of these substantial local resources. So that's why you have on consent a job description for Director of Local Resources and Partnerships. I did make the mistake of including the word "and" in that title. Maybe perhaps should not, but in this case partnerships would be not all community relations, but key community partners who, with whom we collaborate on, particularly in the areas of funding specific programs, also with our oversight committees. And this individual, there's a much more extensive description of the job, of course, but would be overseeing the multiple BSEP and Barra programs, as well as the sub purposes of each program with, I would hope, permitting an even greater emphasis and focus on issues pertaining to equity, quality, efficacy of the programs funded. That's something that the PNO has been asking for for some time. And it's also something, of course, that the PAC has been asking for, Sback, and I think there is the potential for greater focus and more in-depth overviews of these programs, so that the oversight committees really feel that they have the information that they need, key measurable and qualitative indicators. The other piece that isn't written out here, but I flagged before for this board, and I really want to underline, is that it is nearly time to ramp up the planning for the next BSEP measure. We are needing to bring a measure before the voters in 2024 when the current measure expires. That, again, that's twenty percent of our budget. And the planning needs to begin no later than 2022. Probably a little bit earlier. Discussions are certainly in the back of my mind and have been. Beginning to prep the PNO on that. It'll have to wrap up and be, ramp up and be intensive in the following year. So the next director really needs to ensure that they can be deeply focused on this, and it requires a great deal of community engagement. I was deeply involved in the planning of the 2016 measure, as well as the 2020 Barra measure. It requires community engagement, polling, fiscal models, work with ed services, all to ensure that what we're doing is structured to meet the needs of our students for many years to come. So that's one element. Another element that is overdue for a rethink is the Public Information Officer role. That, that job has morphed over the years substantially. I think it's unrecognizable almost as to what was done previously in, with the PIO position, which had really kind of been a photojournalist position in a way. And, and that was a wonderful and very valued component of what services that we offer to our community. But at this point in these times, we really have a need for, and our current PIO has jumped in to serve to be more of a strategic communications leader, someone who is adept at crisis communications. Someone who is able to advise the superintendent and who would really take the lead as our current PIO is currently doing. And as I'm prepping the transition to lead the communications team and with the assistance of a communication specialist. So the Barra TSA that was previously funded out of Barra Oversight Funds, we really found that that, the oversight component really wasn't what was so needed as direct work in recruitment and retention. And that's, so that's what Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinosa was describing. So we put that back into the, the five percent budget, not the one percent budget. That, and then shifted a little bit more of the funding for the Oversight Office itself. So the Director and the Specialist Positions, so that then frees up funds within BSEP to be able to sustain at least a fifty percent Communication Specialist, along with ten percent funding, as I mentioned before, from Barra. And there's, that's still probably not enough. There, this is a, a community that expects, rightfully so, a great deal of timely communications and a great deal of community engagement. And that is the one piece that I will flag that really isn't outlined here. That's something that Superintendent and I are continuing to discuss. There are such, such great but fluctuating needs depending. Many special projects have come my way in my now nine-year tenure, including being the district meteorologist when we had air quality issues that now has fallen to the PIO. Liaison to Public Health. One thing that I'm very proud to have been involved in is the liaison to the Sanctuary Task, Task Force and drafting protocols for responding to ice raids. Also been engaged in the renaming of schools, a very happy and challenging task. But an incredible opportunity to confront our historical and current racist structures and uplift stories. And we now have Sylvia Mendez and Ruth Acti as part of our family, a wonderful thing, but I'm not sure that that really belongs with the Director of Local Resources. So something that we really need to discuss, but, but I do think that we need to ensure that the focus oversight of the twenty-five percent of our funds is, is strengthened, that we can attract someone. I'm currently proposing that this be a certificated position. It could also be a classified position, but currently I'm envisioning this as certificated. Who can really strengthen our oversight of, of these key funds and contribute to substantial discussions of their purposes of equitable expenditure of these funds and the careful oversight and partnership with our oversight committees. I hope to be able to transition out of this role myself in, in such a way that I can pass the baton. I think it's really important that this is a position the PNO has commented multiple times since I've let them know that I'll be moving out of the position, how important this is in the eyes of the public. It's a, a position of high public trust, and we've in fact really only had two long-term trustees in this position. The phenomenal Monica Thiberg, who was in this position for close to twenty-five years, and then after one year hiatus, then I came in. So I really care deeply that this be handed over to someone who is going to take on that position with the, the focus and, and the trust that it deserves. So that's, that's the thought here for the reorg. The additional, you only have the Director of Local Resources in the current packet. The additional components for communications will be coming to you at a later meeting. So thank you very much, and I'll stop my share.
All right, thank you so much for the presentation. We have a quick five minutes for any questions or comments before we move on. So does anyone have anything they want to add? Uh, yes, Director Sina?
I'm sorry, I always have a question.
Okay, we, we, we want them to keep coming, so.
Director Berry, as usual, action-packed, tons of information in really concise amount of time. I have one question, I'm so, and maybe this is to Dr. Stevens, but it is a highly financially astute position. So in the sense, not that certificated people can't do that, but just wondering, like, you know, what are we looking, you know, kind of why certificated versus? Because it's hard to go, and I think in a posting, it's hard to shift from certificated to, to not certificated. So I'm kind of interested in that. And then I'm assuming the Public, Public Information Officer slash Communication continues to be the bridge with facilities? Also, is that the case? I mean, they're the ones who are also doing some of the community engagement around some of our capital projects, right? Or they have in the past, are they still?
Why don't I take both questions? And I welcome Director Berry, you can jump in, because we've had many discussions about the, you know, how to classify this particular position. In moving towards a certificated administrator, we hope to accomplish a couple of things. So you're absolutely right, financial acumen is very important to this role. As is a knowledge of programs. We've been very fortunate for this many years to have somebody who is good in both. In Natasha, that and many more things. And we, we hope in sort of moving towards a certificated administrator, that we will be able to strengthen both sort of oversight around programs, integration into ed services, a connection into core curriculum. Things that, you know, could be strengthened. It's not to say that there are problems in any of our programs at this point, but that sort of knowledge of program is what we're interested in moving towards with this particular move. Director Berry, would you add anything that, that I might be omitting in my response? I know we've had a few hours of talks about this, haven't we?
Yes, and it's, it's, it's hard to come up with the ideal solution here, and it may be possible to, to have it both ways. It just is a longer process for, as you know, with a classified position that needs to go through the Merit Commission. So it, it could be that we can post it both ways, but we need to begin by posting it somewhere. And I do believe that there are plenty of folks out there, people who've been principals, people who've overseen programs of substantial size that, that could take this on from the certificated world. And I, you know, while I've been able to do my best this year in particular in articulating to the PNO what the, how each of the programs in, that are funded through BSEP work. It really, I think, could be strengthened by, and, and the decisions made about the resources strengthened with someone who's a member of that ed services team. I really do think it could go both ways, and it could be that we'll be looking both ways.
Well, so I just think that, I mean, in the past, the associate soup of ed services or instruction has always been kind of attached at the hip with you around those discussions, you know, whether it was Pasquale or in the past. And so I just want to not tie our hands, because you are stepping back. And we don't have the luxury to just like, kind of, you know, wait for eternity to have the right person. And how many million doll, how many millions of dollars is this? It's not like a school site budget.
Correct. And that's why I do not intend, I'm, I'm going to, I cannot promise, but my intent is, is to, while I will, do need to reduce my time substantially beginning in July, I do intend to see it, the transition through, whether it takes a moment or more than a moment.
Yeah, which I appreciate tremendously.
All right, awesome. So if there's no more questions or comments, is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
I'll move it.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Awesome. So Ms. Shires can call roll.
I'm sorry, can I ask another question? I should have asked. So, because I have the same issue around being pin, pin, pigeon-ing this role for certificating. So if we approve this now, are you saying we'll just bring it back if we find we need to, to make it more flexible or what? Like, how does that work to make it more flexible after it's been approved?
And you had raised that earlier, hadn't you, Director Babbitt, about another position? Yeah, that you, the board would need to approve different position descriptions, a certificated one and a classified one. That's, that's all. And we can queue that up.
And then the added hurdle is if it goes classified, then it has to go through the Personnel Commission, right?
And that takes some time, yes.
So just, and Director Sina probably already knows this, but just to throw that out there too, that's one of the reasons why. It's, things work more expeditiously, expeditiously, when it doesn't have to go through that, through that other process, correct?
Right. I mean, the flip side is also a credentialed person can apply for a classified position. A non-credentialed person cannot apply for a credentialed position, so you really are fixing it.
That's correct. The credentialed person could, although they often are not tempted by the classified. The classified directors are at a different pay scale. They don't move up in the same way that a credentialed does. There is kind of a two-tier system, so.
Okay, sorry for that. I will vote yes.
Director Sina?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Director Alton?
Yes.
Yes. All right, awesome. So now we're moving to our next discussion item, and let's just be mindful of the time, because we do have another discussion, action item after this for the thing we pulled from the consent calendar, as well as extended public comment. So while this is happening, let's keep in mind of time. And I think Dr. Stevens, are you presenting this?
I'm actually turning this next presentation budget update over to Assistant Superintendent Follinsby.
All right.
There she is.
Here I am. So good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen, and I'll be doing a very brief presentation on the Governor's May Revice. So, a word of, I'll do it in present mode, hold on. Okay, so this, the May Revice, usually we wait for the School Services Workshop that we use their dot board to develop our budget. That's not coming out until Thursday. So this is just a really high-level overview of the information that we have at this time. And I hope to bring additional information back to the board as we receive it from School Services. So this evening, we're just looking at highlights of the Governor's May Revision, the fiscal impact as we know it of the May Revice. And as I mentioned, we'll be getting information about the COLA for the out-years. That's the information that's actually missing from this presentation. And you may remember in the January budget, the, there was a wide difference between what the Department of Finance projected and School Services, and our projections were the average of both rates. So on Thursday, I'll have more information in terms of the COLA, which impacts our, our revenue for LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, revenue for the two subsequent years. So I'm going to news release this budget on May fourteenth, and it is good news. It's a significant expansion in revenue for school districts. A lot of opportunity for districts to achieve fiscal resiliency, as well as access to high-quality education and programs to accelerate and enrich academic learning. But this budget has a lot of one-time revenues, and I'll take you through the various spots fairly quickly. And the danger with that is trying to build programs that are over more than one year with one-time revenue. And, and this one-time revenue also does not address our structural deficit. So it's a good budget. It's great news for districts. But however, it does not address our fiscal, our deficit spending for school districts. So May Revice, the Prop ninety-eight funding, Prop ninety-eight actually establishes minimum funding for school districts and community colleges. And in twenty-one, twenty-two, in the January, Governor's budget, it was eighty-five point eight billions, it's not millions, this is no billions. And in the May revision, you can see the substantial increase in. And in the may revision, you can see the substantial increase to ninety three point seven billion. What does this mean for Berkeley as we know it? So we're going to look at the COLA in the may revise. So the may revise introduces something that's now called a mega COLA. So we've heard of the compounded COLA, we've heard of the statutory COLA. So now we have a new term, the mega COLA. And the statutory COLA in 2122. Is 1.7. So that's good news. It's up point zero two from the January. Budget, and I'm building to the mega COLA. So this is the process. We also got an additional LCFF COLA of 1%, and that's only for LCFF programs. And that gives us a compounded COLA of 2.7. But when you look back at the prior year and compound both of those COLAs, we're looking at this. 5.07 mega COLA, which is up from 3.84% in the January budget. And what does this mean for us, our bottom line? It sounds like a lot of money and a huge increase. It's a million dollars in our base funding. And about $50,000 in our, in our. In our supplemental funding. So heading in the right direction, not a huge rainfall, but a windfall. So we're grateful for this, and this is ongoing. And of course, once we get additional information on the COLA for the out years, we would have a better idea of what we're looking at over three years. So then we have a compounded COLA and and that's at 4.05%. And that's the COLA that they're applying to our special education. Program, and that's up from 3.84% in the January budget. And this, this gives a district about $250,000. And then the statutory COLA 1.7%, that's going to be applied to our child nutrition. State preschool and mandated block grant, and we're still unpacking the the impact, but we don't anticipate that that's going to be. You know, a significant, we think this, the mandate block grant may give us another $20,000 or so. But we're unpacking each one of these, and I'll have more information on Thursday. So back to the LCFF, we mentioned that the COLA was 5.07%. There are some other changes that the governor is proposing. The increase of the base grants. The grade span adjustments and the career technical, that's the impact of the COLA. The the funding calculator was released on Monday. And since Monday, we've had two, two revisions, because there were errors in the calculator. So I think Thursday is our, Thursday is the point at which we'll have numbers that we feel comfortable with. These numbers are still somewhat preliminary. And again, mentioning another million dollars in base funding. So deferrals in the may revision, there is a proposal to pay off additional. Deferrals. But we are still going to be experiencing deferrals in our. In our 2122 budget, just not 2223. In special education, we mentioned, I mentioned this earlier, there's going to be an increase in the base rate. It's going up $25, and that's about $25,000, $250,000 for us. However, there's good news about additional funding for special ed, even though it's one time. The governor is looking at funding IEPs and. Sped complaints and monitoring. Coordination between the CDE and the California Department Developmental Services and Districts. And I have a lot more detail in the write-up that's that's. In the agenda, but this is just a very quick overview again. School nutrition, there is increased state reimbursement for for school nutrition program. And also a 100 billion in one-time funding for infrastructure and training for cafeterias. No new funding for CalSTRS and CalPERS, and actually, CalSTRS has gone up slightly since the January budget. CalPERS has reduced slightly from the January budget. You may remember I've brought to the board the increase in our unemployment rate. That's. Going to cost about 1.4 million dollars. There was no mention in the may revise about. Addressing this increase for school districts. So we still are faced with a 1.4 billion dollars, million. Dollars increase in our unemployment rate. The governor is going to be spending quite a lot of money on our broadband. In terms of expanding broadband access for isolated and underserved communities. Universal TK for for four-year-olds. Over a three-year period. Again, a laundry list of items he's investing one-time funds in. Student learning, health and safety and student learning. Expanded learning time, a billion dollars to provide summer and after-school programs. He's spending 3.3 billion dollars in a multi-year plan for educated professional development. And behavioral health. System, this is a mental health, he's spending $4 billion. Over a five-year period to identify and treat behavioral health. Health needs early. So at this point, we know what this, what this means for our LCFF funding. We're waiting to see exactly how these other programs will unfold. And how it will actually provide funding to to school districts. So just in terms of looking at our revenue assumptions, this chart should look pretty familiar. Except that the change for the COLA. It's no longer 3.84%, it's a 5.07. We're still looking at a 4.5% decrease in student enrollment, but as Dr. Stevens shared earlier. We're thinking that we're probably not even going to have a decrease. So so these, these projections will impact the 2223. Enrollment. So I propose bringing back. A multi-year projection that will have the, the COLA for the out years. As well as the change in the projected student enrollment. But what do we have right now? We have the, the. Multi-year with the 5.07 and the million dollars in LCFF funding. So this revenue went up. By a million dollars. I have not changed anything in the. The ending fund balance obviously has gone up by the same amount. But in terms of looking at 2223, I haven't unpacked this information. And not to sound like a broken record, but on Thursday, I'll have enough information to. Recast the COLA and also look at our projections for enrollment. The next steps, we're going to be looking at the fiscal impact of the may revise. We're looking at our data analysis in terms of equity. LCAP goals. We also will be landing on a target. For budget reductions and and suggestions for meeting that budget. Budget reduction level. And of course, we're going to continue working with our PNO and. Collaborating with our advisory committees. We're running out of time. We have, we've scheduled another meeting with our SBAC. For two weeks' time, and we'll be bringing updates to the board. And of course, we'll be continuing to partner with our labor partners in the city of Berkeley. And at this point, we'll take questions or participate in a discussion, and I'll stop sharing my screen.
All right. So there any questions or comments? Yes, Director Alper. Oh, and just keep in mind, we have another item after this, too. So let's try and keep this going quickly as well.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. Just a quick question on the expanded TK. Was there any discussion of? Facilities assistance or funding around facilities because with the last expansion of TK. There was funding for the, for teachers, but then it led to a real shortage in in space in in our district and other districts that couldn't. You know, that aren't able to just expand out into the world. So I was just curious about that.
I will have to check. I don't have that information. I'll double-check and get back to you on that.
I can jump in. I have not heard anything. I am hearing a lot of controversy starting to emerge, both among pre-K providers. About what this will mean for their service to families, as well as facilities issues. Districts are not equipped to be to to open up potentially, you know, a dozen or more new classrooms.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Right, Dr. Badit?
Thank you. I just wanted to appreciate making sure that we line up our, our spending goals with our LCAP plan. Which is the overarching district plan for the district and also. To note that I was glad to appreciate, appreciated attending the Sback meeting. This week, learned so much, and I just want to make sure that all the committees that are supposed to have their representatives. Have actually been invited and that they know their appointee. It's time for sure that they're there so they can be a part of the discussion and the voting Q and A process. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Sina.
Kind of piggybacking on what Director Babett said, and this is more for Dr. Stevens probably is. Making sure that our PAC and our D-LAC are getting the information in a timely way. There's been some challenges. I think particularly with the D-LAC in trying to have substantive. Dialogue around recommendations that inform the budget. Because there's, there's, and I think it's this fine balance. There's so much information. That there tends to be a lot of presentation and and not enough time to be thoughtful in the consideration. And I think. The PAC has done a really good job and yeoman's effort of people in their volunteer time. And I think the D-LAC folks are trying really hard. There needs to be like. Translation opportunities so that they really understand. And aren't trying to translate while they're understanding all the intricacies of the budget. So anything we can do to facilitate and maybe remind our staff. Who are staffing those committees, I think, you know, Director Sinclair and anyone else to revisit the timeline. Because when I was at the D-LAC meeting a week ago, I guess, you know, it was like. There's budget meetings, and he was like, what, what assistant superintendent is like, three more meetings? I can't remember how many more meetings. I'm bad at that. But, you know, to be really clear on our committees on when they need to have their recommendations. Because it hasn't been super, super clear with folks. I know they're trying. Everyone's trying. It's not out of mal-intent. It's just there's so much fire hose information coming out. Revisit the timelines on when they need to get their input to us by.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. We've been feeling it ourselves. This is just an extraordinary season where we're both planning a budget, have, you know, a very large $16 million COVID budget to plan. And a three-year LCAP, all of which are taking place in the same compacted time period.
All right, Director Vassadah.
To agree with what Director Sina said, and also just kind of smirk because. We're getting better. Director Sinclair just sent out the presentation in Spanish about an hour ago for tomorrow. Just want to say for the whole group here, we, we've been, yeah, we've been expressing this, and we're getting better, we're improving, so.
And it has been a concern, I will say that.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Superintendent?
That it really has been a concern and that that staff really do take that seriously, and we're trying really hard to make sure the translated materials are available in a way that makes them accessible.
Awesome. So are there any more questions or comments? Oh, cool. So now we are going to move to the item that was previously pulled from the consent calendar, item 12.4. About the job description for the Director of Awesome Family Engagement Equity. And I don't know who's starting this conversation. Dr. Stevens, is that you or?
Yeah, if you'd permit me, I'd love to just offer a couple of remarks, maybe just a bit of framing about this conversation, and then welcome a discussion or questions. So I know that folks who follow along in discussions among our advisory committees or here at the board level have heard for many months, in fact, it goes back. Better than a year, a real desire to see an expansion of the Office of Family Engagement and Equity. Just when we were together two weeks ago, we heard a presentation by the supervisor of that program, Anne Caligari, about work they've done over the course of the pandemic. And we hear through comments, through testimony, a desire to deepen OFI's work with our families. This really means an improvement of services, a monitoring of those services, an ability to track the services to the families who most need them. And to be able to measure impact. And so this particular job description is meant as one in a series of conversations, moves we hope to make over the course of this budget and planning season. To be able to augment the OFI team. So what I would offer to members of the public is that by approving this job description. It is only one in a number of steps that we'll take. This does not mean that we know yet the person who will be in that position, nor does it mean that the. Board's discussions about further increases to the budget of that team have concluded yet. In fact, I imagine over the next three meetings. We'll continue to have discussions about OFI. So that's what's going on with this particular position description. It just allows us to begin a series of moves, but certainly isn't the end of them.
Anyone have any questions or comments they want to provide? And I just got an application saying my internet is unstable, so if I'm freezing up, just let me know. Yeah, Director Alper.
Thanks, Dr. Stevens. If you just said this, I apologize, but if the board approves this job description. What happens with it next? Does it go, does the Personnel Commission also review it?
That's correct, Director Alper. What happens next? And this is all in keeping with the Personnel Commission rules. This will proceed to the Personnel Commission where they'll review the job description. It's essentially their job to determine the minimum qualifications for this position. As well as to establish the salary range. And then there's another set of technical steps that will need to take place. A number of options are sort of possible from that point, including posting the position. And I'll have to update the board about the way that sort of this process will proceed after the Personnel Commission reviews it for minimum qualifications and salary range.
Okay, and thanks. And then my one substantive question is about the. The development and direction of the Ed Hub. Which, which seems like. Well, so right now, it's kind of a joint, joint project of the Schools Fund and OFI, right? Directing, directing the Ed Hub seems like a pretty big job, maybe even a full-time job in of itself. Can you talk a little bit about the thinking of including that? Particular job within this description?
Yeah, an element of the sort of long-term vision of OFI has included some sort of central hub for families that would make available. Materials, access to advice, support to navigate our BUSD processes, parent education. We sort of had to do that in an emergency and on steroids over the last year, and the Schools Fund was there for us. They were able to make that possible, but all of the family connections came through our OFI liaisons. So there are currently discussions taking place between the OFI team and myself, the Schools Fund, about integrating that Ed Hub. In some modified way into OFI's practices. So in the position description, we've said that the director would establish the vision for that hub, maybe not run it. The decision about how to staff something like that is still in front of us, and in fact, all budget decisions about augmenting the OFI team are still ahead of us in coming meetings.
All right.
I think you froze there, President Miller. Do you want to say what are we?
Director, I'm about to. Am I still?
A little bit. I think you were calling me.
Yeah, I'm calling. Sorry if I'm freezing out.
No worry. Is it a question, a timeline? Dr. Stevens, for the Personnel Commission review, what does that look like? Can you just walk us through like the approximate timeline? Like, is this, when will? Yeah, what's the timeline for hiring for this?
Yeah, so the next Personnel Commission meeting takes place on June 2nd. I imagine at that point, they'll be reviewing our, what I presume to be our approved position description for the director. There are two specific tasks have to do with establishing minimum qualifications and establishing the salary range. From there, there's a number of possible outcomes. I can't predict yet what those will be. But generally speaking, after a Personnel Commission review to establish minimum qualifications and salary range. The posting position is a three-week minimum, as described by PC rules. And then it may take somewhere between three, four, or five weeks to complete the process once there's been applicants. But I want to stress, there's actually a number of possible outcomes after the PC review. But I want to stress, there's actually a number of possible outcomes after the PC review. And I won't know until that meeting exactly which of these paths will be traveling on our way to a point, putting a person into this director position.
Got it. And so you don't know if this is, if this will come before the board again on June 2nd or later, depending on that.
I don't anticipate that this is coming before the board again, except at the point that we have a person for that position. It really sort of moves over to the Personnel Commission and it's their staff that will manage the hiring, sorry, the posting process, manage the creation of a list. But again, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself as I want to continue to stress there's a few possible options after the Personnel Commission comes together to review the approved job description.
Got it. And my one substantive comment about the position itself is that I really like the, the way that it addresses the need for metrics for the program and the inclusion of an annual report and evaluation. I think that's really strong on it. That's something that I also heard echoed by, by the OFI staff. So thank you for including that.
All right, and I'm about to call on you, Director Sine. Before you go, I just want to talk to public for a second, say we're coming up on our extended public comment session. So if you do want to speak in the next public comment session, now would be a good time to raise your hand so we can get a sense of how many people want to speak. We're still to get through this item, just so we know who, how many people and how much time to all you guys. All right, Director Sine.
Thank you. And again, Dr. Stevens, thank you for putting this together and again, kind of elevating the importance of OFI and making sure that we're putting the resources in. I do just kind of in follow-up from my board comments. I'm supportive of having a director position. I really want the organization of the department or the whatever department, division, whatever we call it, to come back. Because I think I, I want us to be very careful about how much central staff we're putting in if we're not expanding school site staff. So I'm going to caveat that and support the, the, the job description. And also just to clarify, the, the position does not come back to us for approval. The, you do the hiring and we will see the outcome of that in our classified, you know, hiring positions. But the, the actual approval of the candidate is not a bore, is, that does not come back here, right? I just want to, because you said something, the next time we'll see it, but we don't actually approve it.
Right, that's correct, Director Sine.
So. I'm sorry, can I sit here for one second? Because just to clarify, and I'm not expressing an opinion on this, but what we're being asked to approve tonight is literally just the description. It's not even whether we're going to fill the position, which would be, is a budget decision that the board has to make. And then there's another, another process that has to happen in terms of filling the position. Is that right, Dr. Stevens?
I, I am presuming that by approving this description that the board is endorsing filling the position, although you will be seeing the costs of this position as we begin to discuss budget issues. And then to return to Director Sine's point, no, no additional funding for OFI will be committed to until it comes to the board and it's approved by the board.
Okay, but what we're technically doing tonight is approving the job description.
Technically tonight, we're, we're approving the description of this person's duties and responsibilities.
But, but to your point, Director Alper, my point is I'm supportive of a director position. What other positions are in the OFI department needs to come back and we need to, we need to hear a full presentation of what the vision of the delivery of the OFI services are in the coming year, two, 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 three, whatever years. Which then leads me to, I, I do have an edit. I don't think it's an amendment. I don't know if it's an amendment or an editor or what. But I would like to add in the knowledge of, in the knowledge and abilities. I would like to add knowledge of evidence-based family engagement frameworks. And to include that, because that's something we have been talking about. So I think you did, you got the data and kind of the accountability there and the metrics, but I want to make sure that we've got knowledge of evidence-based strategies and frameworks for family engagement. So I'd like to add that. And then I would support it.
All right, Vice President Brown.
Um, thanks, Acting President Miller. I just wanted to give it a, an appreciation to Superintendent Stevens for taking the time to explain the importance of this position. And Vice President, or President Alper, not Acting President Alper, for identifying that we are just simply voting on the job description this evening. I am really, like I said before, excited to see this because I know that creating this job description means more services for our most vulnerable students. And so in an effort to show my support, Acting President Miller, if you are ready, I'd like to move this one.
All right, I mean, if we're all ready to go, no more questions or comments, sorry.
Can I ask one question? Sorry, one more. Dr. Stevens, could you talk just briefly? Cause there's, we've gotten a lot of emails and phone calls. We know about this position in the last few days. Could you talk a little bit about while the hiring process is not the board? This, the way the hiring goes for these kinds of positions is there's usually a panel. Sometimes a job that has strong interface with community, if it's publicly posted, has community members on that panel. Again, we don't know exactly what, you know, there's various scenarios that could happen. But are there opportunities where community would have some input on, or families, you know, families directly who have received services kind of thing would have some impact, I mean, input?
Yes, is the answer. We've been really glad over the last several of our selection processes to involve site-based staff to have families at the table and selecting. That was true of our ROSE recent associate superintendent search where we had parents, union partners, site-based folks. And my plan is to do exactly the same thing if we wind up going through a selection process to be sure that that process is inclusive and brings a lot of voices into this, into this important decision.
All right, Director Rossada.
And for me to support it, piggybacking on what Director Sine I said, I think it's important that we have affinity group representation there for this position because it's so public facing and we know we have organized affinity groups and they could be a part of it. I think that would be really great.
Was it seconded? I'll second it if it wasn't seconded yet.
I was gonna second.
Well, if we're ready to, if we're ready to go, I think Vice President Brown, you wanted to move it, correct?
Yes, I did, I did move it.
All right, and then is there a second then?
Yeah, a second.
All right, Dr. Babbitt seconds. Mashias, can you call the roll?
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Sine.
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Yes, great, awesome. So now we are going to move into our extended public comment time. There are four people who have their hands raised, so the time allotted will be two minutes for each person. And our first speaker will be Lindsay Knopf.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening. I, my name is Lindsay Knopfelt. I'm a parent. I want to make a comment about how an adequate education has lasting impacts on children and the world. I believe that we have a shared understanding that there are some aspects of education at BUSD that do not yet meet our high academic standards. Providing our students' understanding and skills and literacy in math has been challenging, and this affects all students, not only the unduplicated and the at-risk students, but everybody. Where district assessments point to being on track, but then the skills do not meet state standards. Our district, like many others, is deep in the process of trying to figure out how to use one-time funds responsibly. We cannot continue the use of the same systems and expect better results. Now is the time to invest in our infrastructure. We need teacher and staff training and new programs with a better track record than the ones currently used. And we have to find champions at BFT to make this happen. We need the new literacy plan to be shared because it has to include Orton-Gillingham-based methods that start in the general ed classroom, which alleviates pressure on tier two and three systems. And we need to make sure that we look at math programs with a critical eye. Our kids can't wait. I'm done early. Look at me.
All right, so our next speaker is Monica Reidy.
Hi. Hi, I'm not sure if anyone, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, lost five seconds. And I hope no one's always shushing my kids. I live in a one-bedroom house, so it's really tough to be in this meeting. And I haven't been in previous ones, but it's really important to me to participate tonight because I'm a independent studies parent. I have a fourth grader in BIS. I'm wanting to comment to request that a remote option be maintained for next school year. For BIS students specifically, I think it'd be great for everyone, but I'm specifically speaking to BIS options. I've been told that BIS will only happen in person next year. That's really tough for me because I have an immunocompromised family member. I don't feel safe sending my child in person in fall. All of the vaccination timelines that I've seen, and I follow the news very closely, do not indicate that there will be majority vaccination for young children especially. In fall, I realize emergency use authorization will probably be reached, but a lot of BUSD families are probably going to want full FDA approval, especially for younger children. So I'm concerned about that. Also, fire season, meeting outdoors with our teacher once a week would allow a large margin of safety that I would be comfortable with, but during fire season, that won't be possible and will be forced to meet indoors with somebody not in our household. So just want to vote in favor of maintaining a remote option for BIS for next school year, and that's all.
Thank you so much. And just to clarify at this point. Oh, never mind that. Oh, yeah. So do not, at this point, the people who raise their hands for public comment will be able to speak. And if you raise your hand, unfortunately, we do not have space anymore time for that. So the last two people after Lily are Mimi Pulich and Hector Malvita. And then after that, we're going to finish up. So now Lily, are you here?
I am here. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Lily Howell. I'm a family engagement specialist at Emerson and John Muir and also a BUSD parent. And I wanted to thank you all for the robust and thoughtful discussion that you've been having about our department. I think our, our staff really appreciates all the comments and all the really thoughtful communication that you've had about our department. I actually am making a comment on something very different. While I was listening to the board meeting tonight, I heard that Director Berry will be leaving our district for some reason or capacity. And I just wanted to give my love and appreciation for Director Berry. I don't know when her send-off will be, but I wanted to take this opportunity now. I started out in this district as a preschool parent, a young mom in a subsidized program. And I stumbled my way into being a PNO rep for the preschools. Actually, my husband was first and then I was. And Director Berry really welcomed me in with open arms. I was probably the youngest person by many, many years in that room. She really tooled me with all the information that I needed to know about BUSD and all the different programs, believed in my ability to learn and to advocate. Director Babbitt, I met you in that room too, so shout out to you. But I just want to give my love for her. She has been a tireless advocate for BUSD. She is amazingly smart and brilliant. I went through a BSEP measure creation process while on that board and she worked wonders. So I just, and hearing that conversation, I had to raise my hand and just give some love to Director Berry while I could. So we love you, Natasha. That's it.
I might jump in on this one. I know this is a rare comment. We are looking forward to having Director Berry stay with us in some capacity. We're right now having those conversations. So we're going to miss her in her role as BSEP Director, but she's also, I think, going to be on the scene for us in, in some, some way in the future. So we look forward to those conversations.
And Lily, she already told me she went to bed, so we'll, we'll have to play this for her tomorrow morning.
Lily, you weren't that much the youngest person on.
All right, so our next speaker is Mimi Pulich, and then our last speaker of the night is going to be Hector Malvita.
You're on. Telling you, you're on me.
All right. Hi, I'm Mimi Pulich. I'm the parent of two graduating seniors. So this is my last year as a BUSD parent. And I just really quickly want to echo Lily's appreciation of Natasha Berry. She's so talented. She's so personable and she's funny. Let's not forget that she's also funny. I have, this is my seventh year of involvement in LCAP. I, my first year was the year that we were putting together our first three-year plan. I was a D-LAC representative. And for the past six years, I've been a PAC representative at both King and Berkeley High. And I spoke to you about family engagement at our September meeting. At that time, I was advocating for increasing the staff as they were such an essential resource during the pandemic. And, and I know that you all listened to PAC comments recently, and I wanted to emphasize that in creating this director position, as I have seen it, it is really about elevating the position of family engagement in our district to be at a, just to be an integral component of our district. And in formulating my thoughts around this, earlier when I was working on PAC comments, I was looking at the CDE. Has put together a family engagement framework. It was first published, the one, I was looking at what was on the web that was published in 2014. And I wanted to draw people's attention to that document because it's a really good one. And on top of everything that's been talked about, because a lot of what we talk about in terms of family engagement, we're thinking of what we've been doing and how successful what we've been doing is. But I really think that the, the actual model can do a lot more, and I just want to bring people's attention to what is in this document. And on page 11, it talks about building capacity. And it's not just about engaging families in terms of helping them in situations with their better understanding of the district and helping their kids. But it's also engaging family members in advisory groups to solve problems, draft policy and make decisions. And that is what I hope that our family engagement model will evolve into being, which is more than just a service, but also a process in which the brilliant minds of. Sorry, participate. Sorry about that. Thank you.
And sorry, Ms. Brown, if I couldn't see your sign stuff, you kind of blended in the background as soon as you hold it on, I'm sorry. Okay, so our last speaker of the night is Hector Malvita.
Hello, folks. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hey, I rarely ever get the last word of the night, so I am grateful for this opportunity. Thank you all for sticking around. What a long night. I'm, as a reminder, my name is Hector Malvita, and I'm one of the co-chairs of Latinos Unidos at Berkeley. And I'm just here to, you know, I, I actually bring you all an invitation to work together with groups like Latinos Unidos and other affinity groups in the community to build those strong inroads that we need with our communities that are on the ground and are connected to real issues and the residents and the families. We are organized and we're excited to work together with every single board member and staff, really in the Office of Family Engagement Equity and other positions throughout the district. It's really in our best interest to work together. I also just want to name that it's really important that we all sort of call out any divisive language that seeks to put us as communities against each other. I think we all recognize that our liberation is bound together. It really is. Latinos Unidos at Berkeley has a long history of working across issues from equitable access to vaccines to policing reform. And it's never been about Latinos first. It's always been about all of us together. Because we're all impacted deeply by a lot of these racial systemic inequities that we are facing and have been laid bare really by the COVID-19 pandemic. So I just want to end it there, and I really, really want to thank you all for all the hard work. So I just want to end it there, and I really, really want to thank you all for all the hard work. And again, invite you all to work closely with us and, you know, ensuring that our families and our students are equitably represented and serviced. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming and sticking it out to the very end. All right, so Dr. Alper, do you want to say something? Because you just.
Yeah, well, I wanted to thank you and congratulate you, Acting President Miller, for running incredibly timely, successful, efficient, productive, complicated meeting. You did a great job. And to, to my fellow elected board members, we're going to have to recess to close session briefly after the meeting adjourns. I'll let President Miller adjourn the meeting, but according to Ms. Shires, we can use the same close session link that we used for the close session before the meeting. So please go right there after this. But I'll turn it back over to you, President Miller.
Yeah, I don't want to keep you guys off, saying thank you for this opportunity. It's a lot of fun. And, um, yeah, it's great. And so on that note, I, sorry.
You did great. You're amazing. We want you back next week. Sorry, Todd, you were great.
Um, thank you so much. I'll count that as your extended board director comments. And on that note, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:54 PM. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Great job.
Hey, I just want to make sure I do, so I do I end the meeting for everybody?
Yeah, once you guys, well, announce you're resitting to close session, we can end it for everyone, and I'm here waiting in class.
Okay, thank you.